Good evening. The November 25th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Ravel.
Here.
Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Herakaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns is not here, and then Councilmember Suffered and will be virtual today.
Here.
And Mayor Biss.
Here.
We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is, is there a motion to approve Councilmember Suffered in's remote participation due to a work-related travel?
So move.
I'll second.
Would the clerk please add Councilmembers Burns and Reed to the roll? Councilmember Ravel moves to approve Councilmember Suffered in's remote participation due to work, travel. Councilmember Herakaris seconds. See no discussion. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Ravel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Councilmember Suffered will be authorized to participate remotely for the rest of the evening. The next item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are none. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza. Just a very brief presentation from Corporation Council Alex Rugge on procurement. Hope to just be about a five or six-minute presentation. I'll turn it over to Alex.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, members of city council, city manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza. My name is Alex Rugge. I'm the city's corporation council. I'm here this evening to give a brief overview and outline the city's purchasing and bid process that we go through. All of you know you get many bids before you for approval, but we just wanted to go over the steps that happen prior to that coming to the city council. So there's several areas of law that dictate... Oh, this is not... There we go. Okay. Several areas of law that dictate how the purchasing process goes. It can be found in City Code 117-1. There's also applicable provisions in 110-4 of the city code, and that covers the ethics provision of the city code. Then we have the city's internal purchasing manual, Illinois statutes and case law, and then other authorities dependent on the type of purchase and the funding being utilized. There are four basic types of purchases that the city makes. Purchases under $25,000, and then purchases utilized by invitations to bid for over $25,000, requests for proposal, which you are all probably most familiar with, for purchases over $25,000, and then requests for qualifications, again, over $25,000. As we all are aware, the city council approval is not required when the amount is less than $25,000, and that's per city code found in Title I. The city does strive, however, to get three quotes when the amount is over $2,500 but less than $25,000. Just a brief overview of an invitation to bid. This is not something the city uses all that often, but if an amount exceeds $25,000 for equipment, commodity, or services, then the city puts out an invitation to bid. A competitive sealed bidding method is used when we do this, and this is because the amount is clearly defined as well, or the quantity is specifically defined. So we rely specifically on price, and so that way it's a competitive sealed process. All the bids are submitted to the city sealed, and then there's a public unsealing of the bids, and then a selection. And then the city issues requests for proposals. This is when the city is going to purchase technical equipment and/or professional services, excluding legal services. The RFP allows the city to consider other factors outside of price, including qualifications and experience. And then lastly, the city utilizes a request for qualifications. This is primarily utilized when the city's obtaining architectural and engineering services. It's usually used to determine the most qualified consultant that the city can hire for the service. Pricing is not solicited, but we can solicit a unit in our pricing to evaluate the qualifications. The city may also use an RFQ if we want a list of qualified consultants to be accessed as needed. So for engineering or architectural, if we have like a laundry list, they can preemptively have this list of approved contractors. Very importantly for the city is that the city operates under a cone of silence during all of these procedures, the invitation to bid, the RFP, and the RFQ. So the cone of silence here is outlined. It's the period of solicitation between when the city solicits the bid and then the execution of the award document, which that is when it all comes to city council and is approved. This is incredibly important for the city of Evanston as it follows the fiduciary duty that the city is under to select the most qualified bid and to avoid any appearance of impropriety. So following the cone of silence is integral in the process to ensure that the city's ethics code is also followed. So what is the cone of silence? It's essentially this period where the vendor cannot have any communication with city staff, city consultants, city legal counsel, city agents, or elected officials. They are allowed to communicate specifically with the purchasing manager, and that person is identified in the bid so that the vendor knows exactly who they are allowed to communicate during this period. They can have communications occurring at the pre-bid and proposal meetings, and that's what the city staff identified to recommend the bid to the city council. They also do oral presentations to this internal committee. And then there may be further negotiations or site visits had with city staff on the bid committee with the vendor, but that is specifically... Those communications are specifically only for that bid committee, the purchasing manager, and the vendor. The vendors may face disqualification from one of the bid procedures if they violate the cone of silence. And additionally, any city person who engages in these communications may also be in violation of the city's ethics code and may face an ethics violation. So this is a really nice flow chart. It's a little more complex than it looks like, but here's how the city follows this. Essentially, if the need is over $25,000, then it goes on this graph. Is it an emergency or a sole source? If no, or is it being used to qualify vendors or for professional services? Yes. Then it goes for requests for qualifications, then a proposal, solicit and advertise, evaluate, council approval, and then the award. If it's a no, then it goes right to the request for proposal or invitation to bid, and then it follows the same procedure to solicit, evaluate responses, comes to council for approval, and then the award is given. Now, I'd like to open it for any questions or concerns. Okay. Thank you very much, and please...
Hold on. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ITB or the invitation to bid is a new term to me. Have we used that recently? And by recently, any time within the last three years?
That I would have to defer to Tammy. I believe she's online. Tammy is our purchasing manager. Maybe Tammy can...
Good evening. This is Tammy Nunez. I'm the purchasing manager. Yes, we have historically used the invitation to bid. You might just hear the refer to, excuse me, as just a bid, but it's an invitation to bid.
Okay. So for example, this evening, the parking, the salt purchase, that seems to be fairly straightforward. That might be an invitation to bid. Are we approving that tonight or just selling the salt? Maybe that was last month.
We're just selling the salt, I believe.
Yeah.
But yeah, if we know the specific quantity or the specific price, that is something that can be an invitation to bid.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I had a similar question to Councilmember Nusma, but I am just curious, what was the impetus for us having this presentation tonight?
I believe there were several requests made to go over and do a procurement training process. There's... Excuse me. There's also a referral with the referrals committee right now to change the bid process. So as the city was reviewing that and preparing that based on the referral, we just wanted to go over the basics of the procurement as we prepare to bring that, I believe, in January.
Okay. And what... Is that going to go through MWEBE or...?
Yes. It'll be the December 18th MWEBE committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As always, feel free to reach out to the city's legal department or purchasing department with any further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rugge, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I only sent one email communication from Ross Baker regarding ordinance 70-0-24. They are requesting the city to fully address both breed and weight of pets in order to fully address having animals and housing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This evening, we have under 15 people seeking to give public comments, so each will be given a full three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, starting
Alvin Robert Payden. My father was born and raised and lived all his life in this country, in this city. He was born in 1933. He was not treated fairly as the resident he was. He was treated as a subhuman object, even though his city touted what a wonderful place it was to live in. Despite the racist acts of the city over his lifetime, he still treated everyone with kindness. He particularly took those in need under his wing and taught them, advised them, or sheltered them, and gave them a chance to thrive. The city has not changed. It still throws its oppressive hand on the Payden family through ridiculous code violations or attempts to silence my sister who wants to get answers and help. The 2024 election shows government that we want change. We citizens want to be heard, whether Democrat, Republican, or independent. The city needs to listen to the citizens and give us real transparency and real progress. According to the Southern Poverty Loss Center, there are 39 hate and anti-government groups in Illinois. The number is over 1,400 in the U.S. It has almost doubled since 2021. Their strength is in our division. We cannot survive as a divided city, in a divided nation, in a divided world. My dad passed away on August 21st, 2024. His daughter stands strong to continue his legacy. Will the city of Evanston turn the page and decide to do the right thing and offer a seat at the table, not to oppose but to work with the Payden family and other small black landlords and the black community in general, to offer real affordable housing and real solutions for the black community? To all my Latino friends, todos trabajemos juntos. Let's all work together. We can build something great. If the city can't cooperate with the citizens, then the citizens can cooperate with each other to make a better city for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Payden, who will be followed by David Livingston, and then
Hi. Good evening, mayor, city council, members, city clerk, and city manager. Tonight, you will be speaking and voting on agenda item PB1 Consent Agenda. This item is for PB Refugee Housing Program, which will provide housing for up to 20 refugee immigrant families residing in Evanston. As you all know, I am a longtime affordable housing landlord who has been providing clean and safe units for low-income and refugee immigrant families for many years. I know the challenges that the city of Evanston has in locating affordable units for some of the most vulnerable population in the area. The PB1 program will have some of the same challenges, if not worse. Fortunately, I can participate in the solution to providing units for this program. Currently, I have four furnished two-bedroom units that are available for immediate occupancy that are $2,390 a month plus deposit, 13 months, which is the approved rental assistance amount for a two-bedroom unit in Evanston, according to the memorandum on page three in your packet. I also have more units coming in the next month or two. I hope that you, city council members, will encourage Director Ogbo, Director Flex, the Moran Center, and Family Focus to work with me to provide housing for the refugee immigrant families under this PB Refugee Housing Program. Thank you. I also want to make a comment about the raising the fees for the landlords for rental registration. That was not discussed at any meeting, and it's very important that you discuss these type of things with the landlord, because what ultimately happens when you impose fees and don't discuss it, then we just hand it over to the tenant. So what you're trying to do is balance your budget not in the right way, because it should have been discussed when you're passing all the other things for the landlord. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Livingston, who will be followed by Gail Kemp, and then Matt
Good evening, everybody. I'm David Livingston, a member of the Finance and Budget Committee, but I am not here as a representative of the committee. I understand that it is unlikely that there will be any significant property tax increase reflected in the general fund budget, which will be discussed tonight. We are currently in an excess reserve position, which is very good. Those reserves arose for a variety of reasons, including a slowdown in spending during the pandemic, as well as the permit fees generated from the Northwestern Stadium. Underlying these unusual revenue items, we are, however, running an approximate $10 million structural deficit, meaning that our expenditures are exceeding our available revenues. This situation is a result of many factors, including the unanimous decision to significantly increase our funding to our public safety pension plans. It's also being caused by not significantly changing our property taxes since at least Once the excess reserves are exhausted, which is projected to occur in 2026, while we will continue to work to identify additional revenue and cost savings ideas, we will very likely be looking at a significant property tax increase to fill that structural hole. I believe that rather than waiting to raise property taxes significantly at once, it would have been prudent to build up to an estimated required amount with a smaller series of increases over time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Gail Kemp, who will be followed by Matt Easterday, and then Jeff Barini.
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. My name is Gail Kemp. I'm a resident voter and taxpayer of Evanston. I moved here in 2023 in just about enough time to learn about participatory budgeting and participate in that process a little bit, including voting. I could give you lots of numbers. You already know those, but my take is not about numbers or data. My take is that... My take on this is why it was successful in other ways. What I've observed in my long years in political involvement is an increasing cynicism, a mistrust of government, and a sense that the individual voter's vote and voice doesn't really count. People complain about government, what they're doing, how much they're spending, how come we can't say what's happening? Life is hectic. How do I get involved? They don't know how to do that from the first step. And what participatory budgeting did was to draw out over 2,000 residents with over 1,200 ideas about what our city government could be doing. Thirty-three percent of those were first-time participants. That's important, and I'm not naive enough to believe that there's only one answer to that, but I do believe that there is one overriding principle, and that is something that was recognized by our founding fathers and recognized when they recognized the importance of participatory government by creating a democratic republic. All are created equal. One person equals one vote. Representation of a majority by elected representatives in Congress. Representation of the minority, who are sometimes hurt and vulnerable. Those protections are given by the judicial branch. Now, there's been many errors that have been made, and of course, some things really didn't start out very well from the beginning, but one thing is clear, I think, to everyone, and that is transparency, participation, accountability, and our system will improve away from cynical apathy, and we will be able to better act as government and citizens together. I'm thanking you and asking you to continue with this participatory budgeting process in creating a permanent structure to put in place this system over the next several years so that individuals who live here, who want to be involved, who care to be involved, who don't want to be complainers, want to come here and do what they can to make Evanston a good and better place to live. We can put this in place. We know how to do that, and I'm going to ask you to continue with the process of participatory budgeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Matt Easterday, who will be followed by Jeff Barini.
Hello. My name is Matt Easterday. I'm a professor in the School of Education, Social Policy at Northwestern, and I lead the technical team for the PB team for Evanston and serve on the Board of Open Democracy Evanston. I'm here to support continuing participatory budgeting in Evanston, and we know that city government has a big impact on our lives, and right now, trust in government is at historic lows, in part because people don't see how they can influence their government. Evanston's PB process showed that we can involve thousands of residents in generating, researching, and voting on ideas that address our greatest needs, like affordable housing, environment, health care, and education. We saw almost 7,000 people vote in PB, a rate more than 15 times greater than cities like Seattle. We saw 77 community members develop proposals. That's more than half the people serving on all boards combined, and we saw high school and college students fully participate in government for the first time. Our budget delegates overrepresented people not usually invited to participate, including underrepresented minorities, working-class residents, and first-time participants in local government. Evanston showed that we can do democracy better, and I hope you will continue PB in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Barini.
Good evening. Jeff Barini, Second Ward. I'd like to speak about item A16 tonight, the USDOT grant, and urge you to table or defer or refer that grant this evening. If you vote to accept that tonight, it commits the city to a course of action. It commits the city to implementing the strategy, the putting assets to work strategy of the city, but there's been no discussion of that strategy here, and there's been no discussion with the public. And if you proceed with it, the plan as outlined calls for the creation of an empowered small group of individuals to act on behalf of the city and to go out and research and negotiate possible sales, leases, and partnerships regarding city properties, most notably the Civic Center, the Nois Cultural Center, and the fired police department there. But it also includes all public parking lots, and if going to an extreme, all the way down to tot lots as well. So these are things that have not been discussed with people. If you follow the plan also, it's to empower this group to move quickly on these things, and though they will come back to you to make final decisions, of course, they are empowered to go ahead and put together these arrangements. If also you read the plan, it talks about the need for transparency, extreme, you know, advanced levels of transparency, particularly as this is set up and initiated. That has not occurred, so I urge you to go slowly on this, because these decisions have not been made, and no one knows about any of this, that we've adopted this strategy. So please, take your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment, so we move on to the online public comment, beginning with Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Jeff Smith.
Good evening, city council, mayor, and city clerk. Since the 2021 budget, our city budget has increased almost $100 million. Please explain to the public why the city of Evanston still finds it necessary to charge residents more money for water. I recognize the city has some help for low-income people to pay their water bills, but this still does not account for the hundreds of people facing water shut-offs to this day. Yes, you are lowering sewer rates, but still are putting a burden on raising the water bills. Evanston is operating a bit like District 65, a lot of financial chaos with our lower-income communities taking the biggest hit. Please, stop the chaos, get our financial house in order. The community is depending on you to do so in this budget. In addition, just to note about plan developments, we need to rethink what is being built and how ground-floor retail space is used. There's plenty of empty ground-floor space unused. What is the plan? What are we asking of these developers? I think it's time to start pushing developers to share their plans for filling these spaces. There is too much vacancy, especially downtown in the core. How can developers assist local businesses in renting of these spaces? Many have sat over five years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Smith.
Thank you. I have video set up, but it says that I can't start it because the host has stopped it. I'll proceed by audio. I'm here tonight, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, to ask this council to slow down the envisioned Evanston 2045 process and to make provision for an up or down vote by the voters at the end of the process, as has been suggested on the Land Use Commission itself. Some of you that know that I do a lot of home repair... Some of you that know that I do a lot of home repair, and there's a saying that I found out the hard way that is true. Measure twice, cut once. Or as the 19th century journalist Emma Bullitt said, whatever is worth doing at all is worth doing well and slowly. I participated in the processes leading to the Central Street Master Plan, the Lakefront Master Plan, the Downtown Plan, the Transportation Plan, and the Climate Action Plan, with special attention, and the last one, to land use and transportation. Land use and zoning are matters that require thoroughness, sensitivity, if not delicacy, detail, and attention to very place-specific nuance. This is so, not just because due process demands respecting the impacts to people and property, but also because it's the right thing to do in a town with close to 10,000 people per square mile, elbow-to-elbow. The current comprehensive plan and rezoning are moving along at an unprecedented pace and on unprecedented parallel tracks instead of sequentially. The scope and the radical change are much greater than by comparison the Central Street Plan, which only had one strip of road and didn't have as great a scope. But there's been far less give-and-take in transparency in terms of backup data or tabulation of feedback. This deprives what should be a fact-intensive process of fact and nuance. It deprives us all of the best uses of the talent of our staff, and it deprives Evanston of the knowledge and wisdom of our own residents. The proposed district zoning that was dropped last week, the night before the first LUC hearing on the draft plan, shreds the Central Street zoning that has worked successfully. Recent reports said we've got a 3% vacancy rate there among retail. And it shreds the Downtown Plan, that while never codified, was adopted by this council, not in ancient history either. This is contrary to what the plan, moving on a parallel track, tells the public we're doing. I don't think many in this room know this, and I'm sure most in Evanston don't. And it's because what's on both tracks is moving too fast. The current schedule of hearings during the holiday season is too much too fast. I've got a lot higher tolerance for reading and discussing planning and zoning than most folks do, and I don't want to spend this time of year, and a municipal election year, on that. Our planning and zoning are too important to go off rail. So please, slow this train down, make more provision to let residents board before the end of the line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening. We now move on to special orders of business. As in recent, recent evenings, there are a large number of budget-related special orders of business on the agenda. And so I would entertain a motion of relative to SP1, or perhaps if folks are interested, a collection of special orders.
Mr. Mayor, I will move item SP1 and SP2 together, which is ordinance 93-024, amending charges, rates, fees, and penalties for the water rate, and amending 94-024, which is the same for the sewer rate.
Councilmember Newsma moves approval of ordinance 93-0-24 and 94-0-24. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions about our sewer fund. And I see that we, according to the budget memo in the, on our budget page, we have a very large surplus, I think $8.9 million. That was as of the end of the third quarter. And that that's going to reduce the rates? So how much of that $8.9 million will be used of that surplus to reduce the rates?
Mayor Piss, Darrell King, members of the City Council, Darrell King, Water Production Bureau Chief, City of Evanston. So I don't have a figure for how much, what that dollar amount will be that will be used within the reserves. So I don't have that figure here tonight. I would have to send that at a later time.
Because that is a significant, that's, at least that was. It's probably even larger by the end of the year. But as of 9:30, it was 8.9 above our reserves in the sewer fund. And I'm glad we're going to use some of that to reduce. But I just, it would be nice to know how much, and if we're still ending up with a relatively healthy surplus balance on top of our reserves.
Good evening, Members of City Council, Clayton Black, Budget Manager. So if you look at our FY 2025 budget, it has a budgeted deficit of 2.3 million in the sewer fund. So if you think of it that way, we're drawing on that reserve by 2.3 million next year as part of our budget.
Okay. And, and you know, I am referring to the budget document you prepared also, that showed an 8.9 million surplus. And so, okay, so if we're taking 2.3 million, so we still end up with a very robust surplus balance.
If you think of it this way, though, it's allowing us next year to be able to offset the water rate increase. If that reserve is still in place at the end of next year, and further water increases are needed, that sewer excess reserve would further allow us to potentially reduce that, offset that water rate increase.
So just so I understand, so we're taking 2.3 million of that, what was set at 8.9 million in surplus, 2.3 to offset rates in '25. So does that 2.3 then not, isn't that not then considered assigned funds? It's listed as unassigned surplus excess revenue? Because there's several categories there. It seems that that's now been assigned, if I'm...
Good evening, Mayor, the members of City Council. So as far as the enterprise funds are, water, sewer, parking, and those have the categories like, if you would see in our audit report, you know, we have the budget requirements, which is like the last report, which we gave it to the Finance and Budget Committee. It was around 1.8 million. But one thing which I like to, yeah, it's a little complex how the fund balance is calculated for these enterprise funds. At the end of the year, we make some adjustments. Like, and I think we have a budget memo on that, too. Like, when we pay the debt, the principal amount is taken out of the expense. The interest amount only remains as a part of our audit adjustment. If we buy the vehicle through those enterprise fund, they are capitalized, so the expense is credited. So that when you run the report after all the audit adjustments, you will see a lot less expense there. Any debt payment, principal payment of IEP loan, any GO bond, any vehicle purchase, any assets we required, like say we built a $10 million asset, the whole expense would be capitalized. So there are a lot of things. So the real fund balance for water and sewer, as far as concerned, is kind of in two categories if you see an audit report. One is called unrestricted, and the other one is called net assets, net of the related debt. And that is an important thing, you know? And so those numbers, yeah, kind of, we have to fine-tune because there are so many entries, like payment of debt, payment of, for the capital outlet, purchase of vehicles, all these adjustment plus depreciation comes into the picture, too, as far as the enterprise. So that gives us a true picture. And I think if you look at our audit report, you would see those kind of categories instead of assigned and unassigned fund balance like what you see in the governmental side.
Thank you. I guess my concern is, again, an $8.9 million surplus above and beyond the almost $2 million reserve. It would be nice if we could have used that towards not increasing our water quite as much.
Well, one other thing I want to bring up, too, with that, that reserve, with our CIP that we have planned for the sewer fund for next year, 2.7 million, all of that is being spent with cash. So we're spending that reserve down in 2025.
So, so I mean, if it's already designated, then it should be listed as assigned cash, not as surplus excess. We have assigned and restricted. So if we have $9 million in excess, then it's excess. And if it's used, I mean, I see the same thing for some of our other funds, that, you know, we got 800,000 designated for garbage trucks of the surplus. That should be assigned if we're going to be using it. So anyway, I just think there's some confusing accounting here that should be made clearer. If it is designated for offsetting the water costs, then it should be assigned. If it's being used for some capital project, then it should be under-assigned or restricted or... But, you know, 8.9 million, we can't just say, well, we're going to have some things. We have to be clear. We have to be transparent with the public what the funds are for.
Yes, and you're right. It is a complex, it is confusing. And yes, it differs from governmental to enterprise. But unfortunately, under generally accepted accounting policies, I have to do that. Otherwise, we won't get the audit report. They will qualify, you know, their opinion. So yes, we don't have choice in there. Yes, we can explain here that how it works. And I think we have a one-budget memo, if I understand correctly, that how the water fund is affected, true expense in water, sewer, parking, and where we have all these adjustments.
Okay. And I'm just referring right now to the sewer, to the sewer fund, to the, to the very, to the very large surplus that we have of X, that's listed as excess in the budget memo. Thank you, that's all.
Seeing no more discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
And Councilmember Saffron?
Councilmember Saffron, I couldn't hear that.
Yes, aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against the motion, carries and ordinances 93 and 94-0-24 are passed. Would someone care to make a motion on some?
I'll, I'll move items SP3, SP4, SP5, SP6, SP... I mean, if folks are fine with it.
Second.
Yep, okay.
Wait, what?
I'll stop there.
So not, so not seven?
Not, not seven, no.
Okay. Councilmember Reed moves introduction of ordinances 97-0-24, 98-0-24, 99-0-24, and 101-0-24. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Is there any discussion? See, Councilmember...
Is there introduction or action?
There's introduction. So these, so these, just for folks up here and perhaps elsewhere, these are items that were discussed before, but they were, the discussion led to the conclusion two weeks ago that, hey, these ought to be drafted. So now they're ready for introduction.
That's what these ones are.
And so that's, plus SP7, which is not a part of this motion. So these are, these are revenue ideas that have been built into the budget, discussed and assumed in the budget, and that we're now beginning the process of passing them. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I think, you know, the comments made by the Payton family this evening, I think, are very important with regard to SP6. And I, and I, I think the jury is in in terms of local landlords versus absentee landlords and the quality of, of, of management of properties. And I guess I would like to know that there has been outreach to, to discuss these with our local landlords and to see how we can minimize the impact of raising these fees for, for our local landlords. And I don't know if that can happen between now and when it comes back for final action, but I would feel more comfortable knowing that there'd been discussion and, and if, at least if we looked at ways to minimize the impact for local landlords. Is that...
Point of order, maybe a... Point of order, maybe either a motion or a question is in order?
Yeah, that was a question to ask if that would be something that could happen or has happened that I'm dismissing in terms of outreach to the local landlord community in terms of how we can minimize this proposal, minimize the negative impact on our local landlords. I don't know if we can, but...
Good evening, Sarah Flax, Community Development Director. We did not have the opportunity to actually engage our landlords in discussions at this point as we were developing this. But there have been a lot of discussions on actually creating a more equitable registration fee. The prior, or the existing registration fee is really as a, impacts small landlords at a much higher rate than larger landlords because you are charged $20 per unit, but then it, it's a reducing cost per unit up to, for any building with 100 or more units pays merely $500. So the actual cost per unit for very large buildings is much smaller. This process changes that significantly. The inspections, which are not, don't even exist. Right now, we don't have any inspection fees for rental registration other than the initial, or for, for rental buildings other than the initial registration fee of an existing building. So that actually takes a great deal of staff time, and it is a, something that we have been asked, starting back in 2021, to look at creating a schedule that recoups more of the cost of those, of those services, including going back to the Subcommittee of the Planning and Development, the Housing Subcommittee of the Planning and Development Committee. That's where many of those discussions started. So this actually is based on those early discussions and that have also continued. Registration fees are, I mean, excuse me, inspection fees are not across the board the same for everyone. And instead of inspecting all units on a routine schedule, this is tiered. Inspections, after the first inspection, depending on how your inspection is, how, if you have no violations, you're, you will not be re-inspected for five years. If there are a certain number, a small, a small number, it'll, your next inspection will be in three years. And if there are more problems, there'll be inspection the next year. This, I think, is a much more effective way than prior processes to actually focus our staffing resources on inspecting the buildings that are problematic and that are not providing decent and safe housing for our residents.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the effort that you expressed in terms of trying to make this a more equitable process in terms of the smaller landlords. So what used to be $20 a unit, has that been reduced, then, for small landlords?
No. The registration fee is $40 per, I mean, excuse me. I don't have that in front of me.
I'm sorry.
Inspection fee.
I mean, when you mentioned, I'm sorry, that, when you mentioned, you know, that the large 100 or more just paid a flat fee versus the small ones that were paying, I thought you said 20...
There's an example, hang on one second. In the memo, there's an example of actually two, not super small, but two different-sized units. The annual fee is the same for all buildings because it's basically, it's paperwork. I mean, once they're just being renewed. So if you have a 20-unit building, your cost per unit is, your average monthly cost per unit is 42 cents. If you have a 110-unit building, it ends up being, your annual renewal fee would be $500, and your annual cost per unit would be 38 cents. It's very difficult to make a fee that, when there's a certain amount of work to be done, that is significantly lower than the cost of doing just the registration. So the registration for a single unit would be $100 every year.
For, I'm sorry, for what size, $100 every year for, which size?
Whatever building is being registered. So if it's a single unit that is a building, or a single unit in a building, it would be that. If it is a two-flat, it would still be the same. If it was a three-flat, you know, so that there are a number of those that are all the same registration fee.
Okay. I guess, just, and thank you, thank you very much for going over that. I just, like everything in the city, I just think it's so important to be sitting down with the stakeholders, with those mostly impacted. So, you know, I'll go ahead and vote for this now, but I would just ask, would it be possible, Ms. Flax, to have some participation meetings with some number of local landlords just to get some feedback prior to our final meeting, final vote on this?
We could certainly reach out. It's, again, a short schedule and it's a holiday, but we will certainly attempt to do so.
Thank you, that would be great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just want to make a few quick points. So I want to note that, well, this particular policy hasn't been discussed in the Subcommittee of Planning and Development. I think you were on that committee. We discussed, and Councilmember Kelly, you were chair. We discussed the issue at hand here quite a bit. I think in HCDC, we've discussed it. And it's been discussed in numerous committees. I also want to note that the increases here, you know... Actually, I'll ask this question to Sarah, our staff. When was the last time these fees were increased?
The $20 registration fee has never been increased. That was established in 2008. So it's really one of those things where we spent way, way, way too, we let it go way too long before we made any increases.
Yeah. And so I think one of the things that we need to... Yeah, and so I think one of the things that we need to start doing is, with more, with certain policies like these, building in inflationary increases that are automatic without council having to come back. So I would encourage us to look at that for this. And then lastly, I'll say that we're used to the economic theory that because, you know, if you buy more, you get it at a cheaper rate. If you have more units, you pay less per unit. And I don't think that should be the way we operate here. I don't think that, to Councilmember Kelly's point to some degree, the fact that 110-unit building pays $119 per unit and a smaller housing provider pays a higher rate, I think we should actually inverse that and that the larger provider should be paying more than the smaller provider because... I won't go into that rabbit hole. But I think, you know, that there is a, it's not a net benefit that someone has more and more units. We actually want to diversify that and have more smaller landlords or homeowners. So that is what I will say to this. I don't know if I should make a motion at this point if there's any support for changing the way that we're looking at the fees to kind of flip that on its head. I know that these case examples aren't built into the ordinance, so I think to rewrite this in the ordinance would take a bit more thought than can be done at this moment. So I think we should move this forward, but have some... I'm also trying to gauge if there's even support for it because I don't think we should have staff move forward with, you know, drafting something new if there isn't support. So I don't know, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, how would you suggest gauging interest on changing the fee structure?
I'm not sure I would suggest doing that. You, if, I think you just asked, and so people, I saw one light went on, maybe that's a response. You know, I also, well, now lots of lights are going on, so I think you may get your answer.
Sure, okay. I will hold then.
Councilmember Revelle, followed by Hara Karis?
Well, I, it's my understanding that staff has spent quite a bit of time coming up with this new regime for, you know, charging for the inspections and the rental registration. So I... I'm comfortable going ahead with the draft that they've provided.
Councilmember Hara Karis?
I would support Councilmember Reed's direction to, in a sense, invert the fee structure so that our smaller landlords have a smaller fee per unit than larger landlords.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with three minutes left.
Okay, I would also support that proposal to invert that. I don't know exactly how that would look, and I do appreciate staff's time also on this. I just wonder, is there any way to favor, incentivize, or really support local landlords? And I think this is, I mean, besides this proposed sort of inversion, which might not necess, could, would impact some of the local landlords, but not necessarily all local. I just think we all know that when the landlords are in town, overall, the quality of the dwellings, of the units are improved having a landlord present, overall, by and large. I think that's not disputed. So is there any, I mean, I'm just wondering, I know, I just wonder if there's any, like legally, if we could do that? If we could, based on boundaries within Evanston, within the municipality, if we could have, you know, structures that somehow favor, that incentivize local landlords? I mean, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. That's something that staff can certainly look into and get back to you.
Great, thank you.
I just want a question. So what we're talking about is small landlords or small buildings or what?
So I think both. I think both to Councilmember Reed's point. It's, you know, I think, I understand where he's coming from with the massive, large buildings like Gray Star or others that are, you know, national companies versus a small landlord. But I'm also referring to, in addition to local landlords. And most of those will be generally on the smaller size, so... I think there's two benefits, small and then local. So anything we can do to favor both of those.
So I just want to make sure, because the registration, the renewal registration fee is the only thing that's the fixed. It's that $100 a year. The actual inspections are just, that is completely the same. It's $40 per unit when they are inspected. So we're talking about the registration fee only, is that correct?
I mean, I'll let Councilmember Reed follow up to the specifics of his proposal, but I would say, in terms of benefiting small landlords, benefiting local landlords, I would say anything we can do to encourage more local ownership of rental units, particularly affordable units, I would look to incentivize and support if, to see if that, if we can do that legally within the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
No matter what we decide here, I just, hopefully, we can take this back to ACDC, I guess would be the appropriate committee to discuss this further because I have a lot to say about this, but I don't know if this is the right venue. I think we should, I'm happy to support this for now, but I would love for us to take this back to ACDC.
I think Planning and Development.
Or whichever one, just so we can be a little bit more thoughtful about this discussion.
Three chairs for that. At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Revelle with 4:40 left.
My understanding is to go back to what I think staff was working to do was to try to cover the staff costs that go into doing these inspections. And, you know, so it's a, it's a, what we're charging here is a reflection of what, and probably even this that we're charging is not really going to cover the full cost of the inspections, but it's, you know, in our discussions that we had in that Subcommittee, we realized that we were not, we weren't funding the program to do the inspections that we all said we wanted to do.
I guess I'm not clear that the inspection fees, I think, are not biased toward any size landlord because it's a $40 inspection fee per unit. So what happens is how the landlord maintains the property is really what plays into whether or not they pay more for inspections because if you get clean inspections, you get inspected much less frequently, which actually reduces your, and this is a best practice in a couple of organizations, how to structure your, you know, your inspection programs to try to recognize people who are maintaining their properties and focus our really limited resources on the problematic properties that we have not really been successful at addressing. So that's why it's set up that way. I find it much easier to figure out how to maybe look at reducing the registration fee for small landlords and local landlords, but, you know, how to define that will be the question. So that's why I was trying to ask whether or not this applies to the registration or the inspections or both.
Councilwoman Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for staff, just a clarification. Does this fee structure apply to all rental properties and buildings of all sizes? So even two flats, three flats?
Yes, that's what we're recommending now. There is a, there is an exception for very small two flats that are owner-occupied. They pay half the, roughly half the fee. That was separated out.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with two minutes left.
Thank you. I'm sorry, one, where in the ordinance does it say that the owner occupied two flats are excluded? Or not excluded, but that they pay half the rate?
It's in Section 5-A-4B. It's an older owner. The registration fee shall not be prorated. If the owner of a building that contains no more than two dwelling units is a person 65 years of age or older, resides in one of the two dwelling units in the building and furnishes proof with the application that they qualify for the State of Illinois Circuit Breaker Program, they shall be required to pay 50% of the registration fee.
Okay, thank you for that. So upon rereading the ordinance and... So the way the ordinance is drafted, there wouldn't be a simple way to, in essence, invert that number or make the larger land, housing providers landlords pay more. What we'd have to do is adjust the, either the annual registration fee would have to go up for, you know, folks who have over a certain number of units, whether it's 30 units or whatever. We've used that number of 30 units in the past to separate small landlord, or small and medium landlords and larger landlords. So that's one route that we could take to increase this. And to Councilmember Revelle's point, we aren't receiving the revenue that we need to cover the inspection program. Even this, very likely, maybe Sarah, you can update the numbers, update us on the numbers, but even this increase won't cover the inspection load that we need. And we learned that, you know, over the last year, you know, under pretty tough circumstances that we need to have a robust inspection program in our city. And so what I would propose is increasing the, either inspection fee per unit a bit for when we have to inspect more than a certain number of units or just increasing the annual registration, or the annual registration renewal fee for larger landlords. I don't know where folks who are supportive of that land. But I also agree with Councilmember Burns. I think that this could go to, I think PND would be the appropriate venue for it as the Subcommittee that originally had these discussions was a Subcommittee of PND. So I would actually move to refer... Did I move a package? I'd actually move to remove SP6 from the package of ordinances.
Point of order.
Sure.
You could split the motion.
Councilwoman, this is one time that I'm, maybe you're...
Let the record reflect. Make a motion to split the existing motion into two so we can consider these separately. Which is paragraph, section 27 of Robert's Rules of Orders, Part Two.
So I think I am Chair of PND now. So one, I'm going to use your, I'm going to, if everyone agrees that that is legitimate, then I will move to, or I will, a friendly amendment to my motion to split the motion.
I think your, the idea is you're going to split your motion. One motion will be the motion to introduce
Yeah.
ordinance 101-0-24, and another will be to introduce the other three ordinances.
Yes, so I will do that. So moved.
Is there a second? All right, so Councilmember Reed splits his motion into two. Chunk one, I'm sure the word chunk is in the Robert's Rules, is to introduce ordinances 97, 98, and 99-0-24. And chunk two is to introduce ordinance 101-0-24. Councilwoman Nusma seconds. Would the clerk please take the role on the first part, the three ordinances we have not been discussing? And then, once that motion has been dispensed with, then we'll return to a discussion of ordinance 101-0-24.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Was that an aye, Councilmember Sufferton?
Yes, it was.
Cool. With nine voting in favor and none voting against the motion, carries and ordinances 97, 98, and 99-0-24 are introduced. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. I would like to, so one, I want to acknowledge that the reason this is before us today is because we want to have a regime in place to account for the revenue that we are putting in our budget and voting for today. So I do think that, I don't think we need to kick this around a lot, and I do think it just needs a bit more focus. And so I would move that we...
Can I just, before you make a motion?
Sorry.
Can I just make a
Sure.
Point of, point of being the mayor. Can I just recommend, in light of the point you just made, that you, that the, that the item be introduced this evening? It can be, it will then be around, if that happens, in two weeks. It would, there's, there would be a PND meeting in two weeks anyhow, at which this could be hashed out in more detail. Various members of council, obviously, many of whom care about this, could work with staff between now and then. And then we would be in a position, if the work had been done appropriately during the course of those two weeks, to actually act on December 9th. And if not, then at that point, it can be, again, kicked to a different committee or referred or tabled or something.
Is, I don't know if this is a Springfield thing or if we can do this under our rules. Is it possible to introduce and defer, essentially, introduce and introduce and send to a committee?
Councilmember Nguyen says yes. And that's the side of the table with the Robert's Rules cheat sheet, so I assume, I assume it's correct.
Yeah, so I move to introduce this and then send this to Planning and Development, which will occur in two weeks.
So Councilmember Reed makes a substitute motion to his previous and previously split motion to introduce ordinance 101-0-24 and refer it to Planning and Development. So if this passes, it'll be introduced, and then it'll be on the PND agenda in two weeks. And then if it passes out of PND, it would come here for action in two weeks. And I would just recommend for, again, folks seem to really care about this, which is great, I think it's important. I would recommend for folks who have specific visions for how this go to engage with staff and constituents and stakeholders between now and two weeks from now because this is a complicated issue that I don't think we ought to just sort of do by the seat of our pants. Is there a second to Councilmember Reed's motion to introduce and refer?
A second.
Second.
Councilmember Harris, seconds. The only remaining light before the vote was Councilmember Hara Karis. Was your issue dealt with? Okay. So in that case, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
And Councilmember Sufferton?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against the motion, carries, ordinance 101-0-24 is introduced and will appear on, will appear on the Planning and Development agenda on December 9th. Councilmember Reed?
I would like to move and, I'm sorry, I'd like to move for introduction item SP7 and move to introduce and refer to PND as well. I think this one has a similar...
Councilmember Reed moves to introduce ordinance 103-0-24 and then refer it to Planning and Development. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against the motion, carries, ordinance 103-0-24 is introduced, and it will also appear on the December 9th Planning and Development Committee agenda. Councilmember Reed?
I will move item SP8, SP9, SP, just wanted, okay, I will move item SP8.
Councilmember Reed moves adoption of ordinance 78-0-24. Councilmember Revelle, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. With regard to the levy, that's SP8, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I just, I had a couple of questions just to see if we could, in fact, contrary to, have a position contrary to Mr. Livingston, areas where we do have these surplus, but I'm not, I just want a little bit of clarity before voting on this. So can you just, and I know the motor fuel tax is restricted by the state. So just so I know, so when we generate, when we have surplus, for example, the motor So just so I know, so when we generate, when we have surplus, for example, the motor fuel tax, I just want to be clear on that. We budgeted a $1.6 million reserve. We ended up with a $5.2 million surplus. Does the state mandate that any surplus, all surplus, has to remain there? Yes, okay, that's all I, so all surplus, anything that's generating surplus is still, okay, thank you. And then with regard to the solid waste fund, I know we also, we'll have about $2.5 million at least in excess funds there also. And I know it was mentioned Clayton at, Mr. Black at our last financing budget, but you know, we have to, we're, but we're using some of that for two garbage trucks, which add a cost of $400,000 each. So that's $800,000. I just, again, it seems to me that that would be assigned and not surplus. For more clarity and transparency, that should be on the memo, be listed as assigned. But nevertheless, that still leaves us with a considerable surplus in the solid waste fund.
Point of order, I just want to remind us that we're on SP 8, which is the tax levy.
Right, so I'm looking to see if we can, in fact, reduce it.
Okay, okay.
So we have, yeah, it's a two garbage truck. The one thing which, I mean, we have kept, it is subsidized by the property tax money, 1.3 million. And this being an enterprise fund, ideally, it should be self-sustaining. And that's our goal, you know, that hopefully in next year or two, it can survive without the property tax.
Okay, so, but we do, we will end up, so we're, so that, you're saying we're gonna take $800,000 out of our excess funds?
For the fund, yeah.
But then that's not, then the excess fund amount that we've been provided is not really an accurate amount, because that's assigned money for two garbage trucks.
I mean, again, as I said, I mean, this is, again, enterprise fund, so when, and is a good example, when we would buy the two garbage trucks, 800,000 would go out, right? We're buying the asset.
I understand.
Is it going to, but what would happen is our unrestricted balance would go down by 800,000, because asset is thing that which is, you cannot spend, right? Once you get the garbage truck, the cash goes out, but you cannot spend that garbage truck, becomes the asset. And in the enterprise fund, there are two categories of fund balance. One is called net investment in capital asset, which means the asset less related debt. And the other category is unrestricted, and we have to focus on that unrestricted. And you would see that what we have, and this is the thing, that we don't do the adjustment during the year to any enterprise funds for the things which I mentioned earlier, issue of bonds, principal payment, purchase of vehicles, capital outlay payment. These adjustments would be done at the year-end as a part of the audit, and that would decide the true fund balance for all the enterprise funds.
Okay, I would just ask, going forward, when we get these, but I was really glad to, you know, I've been asking for this every year, to get a breakdown of our reserves, plus our excess reserves. But when we have funds like that listed as excess reserves, but only through speaking and asking, we say, oh, but some of that's gonna be used for garbage trucks, that's not really transparent to somebody who picks this up and looks through this to try to understand our fund balance. I would say if it's earmarked for garbage trucks, that becomes either restricted or assigned, you know, your terminology, one or the other, but it's no longer just earmarked as surplus excess money that has no designation. So I would ask going forward...
It can use the terms whichever the way you like it in budget memo, but not as a part of my accounting.
Right. But I mean, there's no way anybody would know that, because it says excess here. So I think that that's come up multiple times, and I think that is not clear to anybody, nor is it terribly transparent, if we're saying it's excess, but actually, we have plans for that. I think that has to be clear. So I just had a question about that. I guess I also had a question, let's see. Oh, on the fleet fund, I wonder if you could just clarify, it says, you said, Mr. Black, that we have, we keep a, just so I'm clear, that we keep a positive cash, but without a lot of clarity, and we have a $1.9 million surplus in the fleet fund, could you just clarify, like, what does that positive cash balance mean? So I see that we have, we had, at least at the end of third quarter, a $1.9 million surplus excess, and we keep, just, what is the positive cash that we try to, we strive to keep?
I mean, it depends, the, one of the big thing in the, about the fund balance in fleet fund is sometimes a little confusing, again, like, we are carrying over, I think, $1.2 or $1.3 million inventory, which is non-spendable amount. But that inventory pushes our fund balance higher, so it looks kind of quite decent, but if you think in terms of cash available to spend, it less by that $1.3 million in inventory. And because we have plenty of vehicles, different types of vehicles, yeah, they carry that amount of inventory, plus the other petroleum products and tires and whatnot. So that's the thing we have to kind of keep in mind, that we have to ideally look at the more like, you know, cash balance.
Right, we have to budget. So if we need this much for those items, and that's listed as money that's restricted or assigned.
Right.
But not excess, to be clear. So I noticed that we, at the end of last year, though, we, we made an unbudgeted transfer into the fleet fund of almost the same amount. So why did, and now it's just sitting there as excess reserves. I'm just curious, why at the end of '23, did we make an unbudgeted transfer of 1.9 million into the fleet, into the, yeah, the fleet fund, and now it's just sitting there as excess reserves?
Right. If you remember, the fleet fund was showing the negative balance, particularly with the gas prices were high, some of the, all this post-COVID, all the services and the maintenance and the parts became quite expensive. And that was one of the reasons we asked for that, because it was showing the negative fund balance, and that's why we asked to transfer the excess fund from general fund to the fleet.
Okay, so it's just sort of a, pretty much a coincidence that it ends up being about the same amount?
But now we have, I think, going forward, if we stay like that, at least I hope that we may not need that kind of transfer for next year.
Okay. And I notice the same thing, well, similar with the equipment replacement fund, you know, over 1.7 million in surplus. And again, you know, I was just relisting to our financing budget, Mr. Black said also, well, you know, we need this to buy vehicles, but it's listed as surplus. So if we're planning on purchasing vehicles, then that goes into our budget as assigned. If it says 1.7 million, I just, you know, how much, how much of the 1.7, Mr., you know, Clayton, you mentioned that that was going to, I just, just have an idea, so transparency on this, of that 1.7 surplus, which is listed as surplus, will be going towards vehicles that have been ordered?
It will, and then, even you remember, we, like, the council approved $2.3 million for fire truck, and the other balance is for the regular purchase, other than that fire truck.
So the 1.7 million surplus, just in the equipment replacement fund, of that, how much is going towards vehicles of that surplus?
Pretty much, that fund is dedicated for the vehicles.
The surplus budget is dedicated for vehicles?
Entire fund balance, you know?
No, but it's, I mean, you, you know, we have this cap, this budget memo that you gave us, that says it's got 1.7 million in surplus, so I just want to be clear. So that entire 1.7 is gonna go towards, that surplus budget is for vehicles.
Whatever, yes.
Okay. And, okay, so just one more question? I'm sorry, it's a lot of numbers.
Point of order before my colleagues, time is up.
Go ahead, that's fine.
I am curious to hear the property tax, the relevancy to the...
So, you know, I just, I think that we have surplus funds. I don't think we should really be suggesting that surplus funds are earmarked without transparently acknowledging that. I'm not getting clarity now, but I, I think that we don't, in fact, need to raise our levy. But I don't have the bandwidth now to take this on, but I did want to just try to suss out a little bit of what's going on with these surplus funds that are also, at the same time as being surplus, they're also earmarked. And ask that we have greater transparency with regard to our surplus funds going forward.
I hesitantly just add one more point on this. So in the budget memo that's being responded to, I think that the column is indicated as excess or deficit. It's not saying it's excess is an extra money that doesn't have any plans for it. It's simply money that's in the fund that is above and beyond the fund balance policy. So now, there are a variety of reasons why those funds shouldn't just be swept out of those funds, and we've kind of explained many of those today, and we can do a better job in budget memos of saying, yes, this is an amount above and beyond, and we can add some bullet points saying, well, but, these are the things that it'll be needed to use for, needs to be used for. In many of these cases, as I talked about at Finance and Budget Committee, it's not just excess money sitting in the fund, there's legitimate purposes for those funds that need to be accounted for.
Right, it's just listed as excess.
That are shown as excess above and beyond the fund balance policy.
Right, but we also have categories called assigned and restricted, so, okay. I think that's it. I do, you know, I, I, I think that we need greater clarity. I don't think any, there's enough clarity for any of us, really, but I'm gonna go on and support this now, but I would like to see much more clarity. I think if we're listing excess reserves, but it's in fact assigned, then it should be listed as assigned. If, if two garbage trucks, if we, if we have a commitment to buy two garbage trucks, that's not excess surplus money. So I ask for that going forward, that we have greater clarity in our year-end fund balances. Thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Newsma.
Thank you. To our finance staff, item SP 8 is, does not represent an increase in the property tax levy, is that correct?
Correct, except the library, yes.
And, yeah, other than the library. And as far as I see from my email, I don't see any of my colleagues looking to increase it yet. And so I, I think we're in a good place, a, a, as far as that. I do appreciate Councilmember Kelly's interrogation of our fund balances, and I will weave this into the tax levy. I, I do think, one thing I want to clarify is, you said that the motor fuel tax surplus could not be assigned to other funds. And as far as I understand, yes, there is the Illinois Constitution, which says that all, the recent amendment, I think from 2017, that says all transportation-related fees and fines and motor fuel tax has to be spent on transportation. But it does include, you know, law enforcement, so traffic enforcement and infrastructure. So to my understanding, we could use motor fuel fund taxes to support our police department, particularly our traffic bureau. Am I misunderstanding that, or?
I mean, I think you raised this issue a couple of years back.
Yes.
I don't know whether as a council member or the city clerk, but, and we looked at it, I don't know the conclusive evidence to that, do we have?
But I mean, these are state motor fuel taxes, so these are, the state designates what you can and can't use this particular money for. You're referring to, like, our local motor fuel tax, which goes in the general fund, or other transportation-related revenues, which generally go in our revenue in our general fund and are used for...
But the motor fuel surplus that Councilmember Kelly was discussing, I would imagine, is our local tax.
No, this is all state motor fuel tax revenues that we get directly from the state, that we then report to the state how we spend.
Okay.
This is one revenue source only, and it's all states.
Okay. And state statute dictates that we can only spend it on what?
I don't know, City Engineer Biggs is here, but transportation-related capital expenses, maintenance of roads, salt, snow plowing, streetlights.
Maybe traffic enforcement as well?
I don't know on that piece, I don't believe so, though. I think it's very much...
I certainly know the Constitution says that we can, as far as the other transportation-related fees and fines and taxes. My, so, I, I do think, one, that we're on the right track to not increase property taxes this year. I do think there are still more items of revenue that we can go after to offset the deficit for, for 2025. But I think we're, we're in a good place. So I will stop there.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I appreciate the fine-tooth comb with which Councilmember Kelly is applying to her review of the budget, I really am of the opinion that focusing on allocation of fund balances and interfund transfers, it really misses the larger and much more important point, which Mr. Livingston called to our attention earlier, which is that we are in a structural deficit of about $10 million a year. And we can tweak around the margins to, you know, maybe improve things, we should do that anyway, of course. But so far, with this budget, we are doing nothing to address the underlying structure. I think it would make sense to increase our levy a modest amount this year, because if we want to continue doing everything that we are currently doing, including fully funding our pensions, and nobody has, on the dais, has indicated any willingness to cut anything anywhere, we are looking at raising property taxes a quite significant amount in another couple of years. That is going to hurt. It's gonna hurt whoever's on the city council at that time. I think it would hurt far less if we took a modest step this year. I'm not sure there's enough momentum on, on the council to, to put that in place for this year, so I'm not gonna make a motion. But, you know, we are really burning through our excess reserves, and Councilmember Kelly is right, we do have excess reserves, that is a true statement, but we are burning through them at such a rapid clip, that, yeah, our reserve train is about to go off a cliff. And I suggest it would be in everybody's best interest if we started to slow that burn train down sooner rather than later. So that's all I'm gonna say for now, but looking forward to hearing some else, some comments from other colleagues. Thanks.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Wynn, followed by Burns.
Well, I would like to echo Councilmember Newsma's expressions of concern about the structural deficit and our seeming unwillingness to, to consider a modest property tax increase this year to, to smooth the, so that we aren't really faced with a giant cliff in another couple of years. I keep, in addition, just to looking at the current numbers in the budget, and, and the concern about the structural deficit, I keep looking at the capital improvement program, and particularly the five-year program. And if you add up, and we know we're already, every year, having legacy parks, streets, et cetera, a whole lot of normal capital improvement programs that we fund, but in addition, come, like, and come 2027, we're going to be, if we spend, if, if the projects prove to be as expensive as, as shown in that five-year capital improvement plan, in the, in the year 2027, we're looking at a $95 million amount for just those, you know, civic center, police and fire headquarters, noise, and the service center. And that's on top of our normal budget for parks and streets and all the other good things that we try to do every year. So I, that, we are, we are talking about a really giant cliff. And I, I would be, I would, I would support a motion to add a property tax increase this
Councilmember Wynn, followed by Burns.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I also echo Councilmember Revel and Councilmember Newsma's deep concern, and would also support a modest property tax increase at this point. You know, looking back over the last four years of this council, this is the first year that we have had what you could call a normal budget. We've had ARPA money washing through our, our budget for the last three years, which really has been to our great benefit, but it's also distorted how we view our budget over the last three years. And we now are faced with having not raised the property tax for four years? In an inflationary period of time where we have made the commitment to fully fund our police pensions, we have properly paid our city employees, we're not performing our fiduciary duty by not, by failing to look ahead and recognize this cliff that we will be facing. And we have other governmental bodies in this city who have failed in their fiduciary duty. I don't want to be part of one of them. So I would also agree that we should have a modest property tax increase, because, and I think people will understand that. Everyone recognizes that things are costing more, we have not cut city services, people don't want us to cut city services, and we have made these commitments to our city employees. We, we need to take this small step now, and, and next year as well, and recognize that we do have large costs coming up that, that must be met. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Harris.
I've said this before, I like where we're at.
I've said this before, I like where we're at. We, this council has, for the first time, as far as I understand, created a process where we can talk about the budget year-round. Before, as I observed, the council as a concerned citizen, as far as I could tell, it was a discussion that was crammed, you know, in the last few months of a year. And then literally from the dais, people were like, well, what if we cut this and this? And it didn't seem to me like the best way to go about budgeting for an organization of this size. And so what we've done, I'm very proud of, and again, I've said this before, is not only do we now have a finance and budget committee with council members who sit on it, but experts, one who is in the audience today, and we appreciate your, all your volunteer efforts. And, you know, we know what lever we can pull. We've pulled it often. We've pulled it every, this city has pulled it every time. We needed funds before, which is to pull the lever of raising the property tax levy. We know it's there. We're not, there's no cliffs. Cities do the same thing. When they need additional funding, they pull the lever, right? So there's no cliff. There's no, we're not in a scary situation. It's just, when do we pull the lever? And in my opinion, we pull the lever after we show the public that we've done everything we can to prevent having to pull the lever, right? And to me, that's finance and budget committee, right? That's, and you'll see it when we discuss the budget, because I've taken a lot of time to think about our CIP process. I think we can remove 4.5 million from our, at least 4.5 million from our proposed CIP plan, which ultimately would reduce our structural deficit, would reduce it by not adding to it, right? Because if we approve this CIP plan, we will be adding to this structural deficit by adding to our, the amount of debt service that we pay every year. So again, you show it, you show it by that, right? Grinding it out, going through every CIP line, making sure that we're not adding debt that we don't need to this year. I've talked to Manager Stowe about this. I would love to see us, one department at a time, do zero-based budgeting, really focusing on any potential cuts we can make. I don't think we'll find much there. But again, what it shows to the public is that we're trying every single thing we can to not add to the cost of housing in this community. And I think they deserve that. So I just want you to understand that. There's no cliff. We're not going off a cliff. That lever that we've pulled for generations is there. It will remain there. But certainly, I speak for myself, what I'm trying to prove to members of the Fifth Ward, but people everywhere across the city, is that we're trying everything we can and not have to pull that lever. And I think this council has done an excellent job in doing that. And I think that'll be further reflected in discussions we have in a bit. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Chair. So what I say, what I'm going to say is hard to say, but I think factual and true. I do think we have to increase the levy, whether that's a small amount or not. We've seen the past, first of all, we just had an election that we don't know what next year is going to look like. We've seen pricing for construction skyrocket, excuse me. And what I don't want to do is be behind the eight ball. We've done a good job of being in front of it. And sometimes that means paying that price early than late. And I worry, we've seen institutions dissolve and fail because they didn't plan. They failed to plan. I agree with my councilmember Burns. We've got to exhaust everything, but I think we've done that for the past four years by not raising taxes. And the reality is, excuse me, a number of residents in the Second Ward say, we don't want the increase, but we understand the need for it. We know that in 2026, Councilmember Reed, right, is that when you said the grocery tax comes off the market? That's how many million? Can somebody give me a number?
2.5.
2.5. We know it's coming. And for us to not be ahead of that is going to be a problem. So what does, and I don't know if you all are prepared, what does a 3% increase look like to the average Evanstonian, and change of what it costs approximately?
$60?
If we go with 1.5 million, 3% increase would be around that, 1.45 or 1.5 million dollars.
Okay.
It would be around $48 on a $400,000 home.
Okay. So I don't know if anybody in TV land heard that. You said $48 for a $400,000 home per year?
City portion of tax, yes.
Say it again?
City portion of tax only, yes.
Right. Right. And what hurts, and I've, I've talked about, I've talked to myself about it, let's say that. We have to come together as the taxing bodies in Evanston and sit down and look at what that looks like in totality. We're the last person to talk about what our taxing dollar and the increase will be. So we seem to be the bad guy. But we're representing everyone, whether they're in school or not. In Evanston, that I know, when it's time to do the hard work, we've never had a problem doing that. Financially, that may be a problem for people, and I get that. But if we don't pay the piper now, we will pay them later. And I just think, being fiscally sound and being a taxpayer myself, no, I don't want to increase that, but we need to. So we're looking at, excuse me, major capital processes that are going to cost millions of dollars. And that was one of the very first things I said when I got here. We're not paying attention to our property? We've got to get on cycles and be, pay attention to those things. They cost, and we know that. So it hurts, but I think incrementally, we have to do it. Let me be clear, it could be political suicide to say that. But I'd rather die now than later. And I'd rather not do that to somebody else who'd have to sit in the seat, and then they have to do a 10% increase. And everybody's like, what? When you see that fallout, it's always from what people did before. It's not for what happens right now. So the economics is from before. And I just don't want to do that to the next person just because. So I am in favor. I don't know what that looks like. I say 3, no more than 4%. I'm in favor of that.
Councilmember Suffertin.
So yeah, that, those are the questions that I had when I resonated.
Councilmember, we're having a lot of trouble hearing you.
Right. So that was the question that I had. What number are we talking about? Is there a consensus among those who have said that they want to talk about a property tax increase? Councilmember Harris just said 4% as a cap. The word modest was used before. I think in order to frame this discussion productively, is there a number that we're talking about?
Just to answer your question without, because you don't have the benefit of reading the room, a bunch of people who had previously spoken in support of the concept of increase held up three fingers, which I interpret to mean a 3% increase in the levy, not a $3 million or $3 billion increase in the levy. So that would be, you know, just north of $1.5 million. But just, sorry, just south of, my compass is backwards, of $150, of a million and a half dollars.
Okay. And that would be the $48 per $400,000 of value?
Correct, yes. When Hitesh gave an answer, it was with that 3% increase in mind.
And the excess, or let's stay with, what excess? The additional revenue that this would generate would go where? This would be just to lower the reliance on reserves?
I mean, it would reduce our structural deficit. That would help for the upcoming years, '26 and '27, because we have now around over $10 million structural deficit for this year, last year. And so it would sit in the fund balance, yes, right now.
Okay. And I'd be curious to hear what's the potential reductions that Councilmember Burns proposes to the CIP. I think, you know, without having that information, just generally, I'll say that I think-
Point of order.
That's the wrong direction to go with-
Hold on, Councilmember, if we could have quiet on the dais, because that's how we ought to behave, but also because Councilmember Suffertin, you're quite hard to hear. So just stay close to your mic, wherever that is.
Yeah, I'll try and people for my next round of comments. But, I mean, I understand the, it tends to go lower on the CIP, but I don't know how many of those things that might be deferred are things that would be ultimately eliminated, as we've seen construction costs go up. And so I don't know, again, without, with the incomplete information about what's being proposed for reductions there. But that gets the city to a better place in the future, I think. Again, without knowing specifics, it puts us in a spot where we're looking at more expensive projects to accomplish the same thing by delaying them. So I'm open to having this conversation. I think it's important. But I also think we're doing a version of what had been done in the past, which is making big adjustments on the fly without fully understanding the consequences. And I'd like us to avoid that. So to be clear, right now, what we're talking about is a 3% increase in the property tax, which would generate $1.5 million.
1.426.
Is that correct?
Yes.
1.426 million.
Okay. And then with Councilmember Burns' proposed CIP reductions to come, how do you want to fold in that? I mean, I think it all obviously works together.
Well, I'll just respond to that last part. I, you know, the, I believe the CIP is rolled into item SP17, and so that's when the, that is when the discussion would likely occur on that topic.
Okay. I mean, again, like, you know, cost of living in Evanston is a critical thing for everybody, but the value of living in Evanston is also part of the equation. And what you pay for what you get, and how that compares to other communities is a very important part of this calculation. I'll just leave it there for now.
At this time, no one is asking to speak. Oh, sorry, Mr. Black.
Yeah, just a quick point. So any reduction to this 2025 CIP doesn't have a direct impact on our 2025 property tax levy. That debt service is covered in, starting in FY 2026. So while it impacts our long-term forecast, just reducing part of our CIP doesn't necessarily reduce our property tax levy, just to make that clear.
Well, yeah.
At this, I mean, you're in luck, because at this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time. So we go back for second opportunities to Councilmember Reed with three minutes left.
Yeah. I want to note two things that I really agree with Tom on here. One, this is on the fly. This is, today, it is, the ordinance is for action. It's something some of my colleagues have said they don't like to do. And so, especially for something as big as our budget that we've been discussing for months, to have this come out at the last minute, that we're going to take 1.5 million roughly from our residents, and then we're going to take $1.5 million this year from our residents. Why? So it can sit in the bank in reserve. Not because we have this cliff that is here today that we have to address. We're going to take $1.5 million from our residents and just put it in the bank and look at it and smile. And that just doesn't make sense. Again, as Councilmember Burns noted, we have this lever that we can pull, and we can pull it when we need to, and we don't need to right now. It was also raised that, so I appreciate Tom for asking, you know, the exact dollar amount that folks are looking to raise the property tax levy by. It was stated, we're not looking at, you know, folks keep saying that we have to raise property taxes. We have to raise property taxes. We don't. We have to raise revenue. And revenue comes from a whole host of places. And we need to offset the structural deficit. So I do think that the $1.5 million that, in structural reduction of our structural deficit, that Councilmember Burns is proposing by reducing CIP does make a difference. And while, of course, it won't affect 2025, we're really trying to solve that structural, long-term issue. And that's what we need to look at. And again, there are plenty of other revenue options. Folks, what are the most critical things to our existence, just as humans? We need food. We need shelter. We need clothing. We need, those are the kinds of things that we need. We don't want to raise the cost of food. We don't want to raise the cost of shelter if we don't have to. And we don't have to. And Councilmember Harris pointed out that folks don't want this, but they're willing to take the hit for the betterment of our community. Again, if they're willing to increase the cost of housing and just living in our community, maybe they're willing to walk a block or two extra occasionally to avoid paying a slightly higher parking rate. Maybe they're willing to do a whole host of other things that do not, maybe they're willing to pay 10 cents for a paper bag occasionally, rather than increase the cost of housing in our community. And so I think we really need to continue to look at the ways that we can solve this structural deficit, ways that we can bring in additional revenue that will not include this year taking 1.5 million dollars from our residents and sticking it in our excess reserves. And so I would really caution against us doing that. Thank you.
There's still no one asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Burns with two minutes left.
I just want to make sure it's clear, because I think this can be confusing, is that when we say excess reserves, we're saying we have a general fund reserve. Let's just stay there, because there's, we have reserve funds and other funds, but just a general reserve fund, the goal is we want to hang on to 16.6%, right? So excess of that, I believe, is, we said, what, 22 million, 23 million? That's over our goal. Because I just want to make that clear. You hear different things up here, and people will say, oh, well, you know, we're blowing through it. We ain't blowing through the 16.6% that the point of that is to hold on to it. That's what we hold on to. We're not blowing through that, right? I just wanted to be abundantly clear. We're not blowing through the 16.6%. Well, not this year. What we're saying we're doing is, we're spending the excess. And I've said this, and I'll keep saying it. We should either not collect it or spend it. Put it in good use so that it's working for people, period, right? Like, that's how I feel. That's always going to be my position on it. We do not need to collect it. If we collect it, we need to put it in good use, right? So to me, it's a good thing that we're spending it and not just holding on to it, right? 6.6% is what we've already said we want to hold on to, rainy day fund. We got that, right? We're $23 million over that. And so I think if we, if we, if, I think spending that excess, that 22, $23 million responsibly makes sense to me. It doesn't make sense to hold it. And if we're going to hold it, we need to give it back to the public. I want to be clear on the things that I really want to see. Again, zero-based budgeting, department by department, starting with one department next year, really combing through it, understanding where we can cut costs, find efficiencies, et cetera. And there's four things to me. Revenue ideas, we already did it. I don't think we would have had, what is it, 2-point-something million dollars in new revenue if we did not go through this exercise. And the good thing about raising it this way, as opposed to property taxes, is some of it is offset by people who come into Evanston and shop and do business here and go to our, you know, our parks, facilities, right? So it's not all born on City of Evanston taxpayers. So that's the benefit of looking elsewhere as opposed to property taxes. And yes, if you are a renter, you are paying as well. You're paying property taxes as well. That, that, that cost is being passed on to you. Conversation, and I'll start, finance and budget committee, we have that, okay? And so really, the two things that I, that we don't have, that I would personally like to see to support a property tax increase, zero-based budgeting, and I think we need to have a conversation with the public about how we're using funds. Because in the Fifth Ward, I'm hearing something different. I'm hearing people calling me up, saying, my property tax is just raised, and I don't know how to pay it, and I'm sick of it. That's what I'm hearing. I have not heard anybody say, oh, you know, let's, you know, you could raise the levy. I wish I was hearing that. I'm not hearing it. I got, what I'm hearing is people whose taxes are raising, and they don't see the difference between the city and District 5 and 202. They're just saying this number keeps going up, and they can't afford it. We're talking about seniors who want a fixed income. They're retired. They've been retired for years. They can't afford it. That's what I'm hearing. And so I think we owe it to the public to have a conversation, one about how do we want to use property taxes, I said before. I think police, fire, everybody would say, yep, that's a, that's a good, you know, we all want to kind of pay into that. I don't think we had a conversation about how we want to use budget surpluses, to Councilmember Kelly's point. You know, we put everything in the general fund, and we decide as a council how we want to spend it. Let's talk to the public. When we have excess surpluses in parking, for example, it should be the public that can weigh in and decide how that money is used, as opposed to this body doing it. We need to have that discussion. I don't know if we've had it in quite a- I don't know if we've had it in quite a while, if at all, and when we do those two things, that's when I could support raising the property taxes. Thank you.
Councilmember Haddadis.
So I'll jump in. I will agree with Councilmember Burns. For me and my constituents in the Ninth Ward, the last lever to pull is property tax increase, mainly because, you know, we say right now, you know, $40, $48 for a $400,000 home. We don't have any control over assessments, and that can balloon from year to year. And so, you know, I'm glad that we had that exercise about more revenue ideas. I wish we would have adopted a few more of those. It's not a rosy picture financially. Like, I think next year, we probably will have to pull that lever, but I think, given the fact that we don't operate in a vacuum and we have other taxing bodies in town raising taxes, and I know there are a lot of people, I think, you know, in my ward who are stretched to be here, and it, you know, and also a lot of seniors on fixed incomes, I think, you know, that's a lever I can't pull this year. I think we have to do some, I like to talk about efficiencies, also finding ways to, you know, spend our money in order to save money. I think there's some, you know, especially with a lot of the climate action work as we move forward, we need to be tracking, like, our energy usage and showing the, you know, the public that we're doing all we can to be as efficient as possible and getting returns on our investment that way.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Sufferdin with two minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully audio is better here.
It sounds great.
All right. Well, then, I'll try and.
You still only have two minutes, though.
All right, granted. Well, so I guess one question is, you know, and this is the day that we scheduled for passing a budget, but this is not the last minute. What is our actual deadline for passing something?
The important deadline, obviously, the our fiscal year ends on 31st, so City Council has to adapt the budget before that. The other big one is the tax levy, and I think the last Tuesday in December is the Cook County requirement to file the ordinances.
Okay. So that gives us our already scheduled December 9 meeting to play with if needed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, because the, the one thing that is unique about this relative to other years is we're not talking about raising taxes to present a balanced budget for this year. This is about future years and things that we absolutely do know are coming. We don't even have to speculate on them. You know, once we move into 909 Davis, that clock starts ticking. We know about what we need to do with police and fire. We know about all the deferred capital projects, everything related to parks. So I understand the wisdom of raising the property tax levy this year. One question is, if we're going to go down that road, and Councilmember Haddadis brought it up, and we don't control assessments, do we know what potential recategorized zoning might mean for what assessments would look like when the next triennial assessment is completed? And I don't know if that's a question for you, Ash, or a question for you, Luke, but it's a question if we're going to entertain making changes to what we charge in property taxes. It's an important thing to know.
Yes. And I know the last triennial was a very kind of, so, what do you call, changed a lot of assessment, went upwards, particularly commercial properties upward dramatically. So, yes, we have no control, as you know, right? Cook County Assessor, and I haven't heard anything yet which way, you know, or are they changing from the last time? So right now, yeah, I can't say what would happen to.
Right. The question here relates specifically to the proposed zoning changes included in envision 2045. So do we have any sense of what that might mean for someone who is a single-family homeowner that is in an R1 right now, who would be assessed a higher zoning category potentially, depending on what the outcome of envision 2045 is?
Point of information, Tom, if you don't mind. My understanding is that the way the assessment process works is it would be based, it wouldn't just be because of the change in the zoning classification that property taxes, that the levy might be adjusted for an individual ratepayer, but based on the sales and the value in the area. Am I wrong about that?
That's true.
And so it wouldn't be just because we changed the policy, it would be because we changed the policy, and then that leads to increased value in sales.
The major categories are obviously residential, commercial, and industrial. Within residential, then, the multifamily unit, the single family and all that. And yes, you're right, that when they decide, they look at the last three-year sales market data, you know, to come up with the better numbers, which would reflect the assessed values.
Yeah. The concern is this, that, you know, right now, we're throwing out numbers, you know, $48 on $400,000 of value, but we don't know that. We, I mean, it's a, it's an educated guess, but we don't know that. And that's, that's a concern, and that's balanced with the fact that, again, that we all know the 2026, 2027 are coming. So the responsible thing to do, as Councilmember Harris said, is to get ahead of it, but we don't know exactly what we're signing people up for and how far ahead of it we might be.
Councilmember, is it all right if I interject with something here, just for?
Please.
Just to share some information? The, the assessment of your property affects your bill in two kind of different ways for due to two different types of levy. So if you're, if we're talking about the Cook County levy, then if, you know, all property value goes up significantly in Evanston alone because of policy changes we make, well, that's going to shift Cook County property tax burden to Evanstonians. But then if you're talking about the Evanston levy, all that's relevant is how Evanstonians' assessments relate to one another, because the, the property tax burden is simply allocated among Evanstonians based upon assessment. So if the zoning or other land use changes that we were to make were to increase property values within Evanston, that would affect people's tax bill on the Cook County and MWD portion, but it would not affect people's tax bill on the Evanston portion unless the impact of those changes on folks' assessments varied within Evanston, which is kind of a peculiar thing to imagine. But go ahead.
I was just going to say, I mean, again, like, what we're talking about, if you're an Evanston resident, right now, you don't know if your child's school is going to close, you don't know what zoning category you're going to be in. There's a lot you don't know. And increasing property taxes in that environment adds another uncertainty to things that, again, when we talk about cost of living, that, that's, taxes are a big part of that. The cost of living, there's a lot of factors to it that the city can affect beyond just property taxes. And what I'm saying is, we are injecting uncertainty in, to people's financial picture, and I mean, to the point of the proponents of raising the tax now, we would be lowering that uncertainty if we do it right now, because we're projecting that it's going to have to happen either way. So do we do it in small bits, or do we do it all at once in the future? But amending it at this meeting without fully hashing that all out concerns me. But I also know that we can pass what's before us, call it good and move on, but we, to Councilmember Wynn's point, haven't necessarily fulfilled our long-term duty to the city by doing that. But understanding exactly what we're doing is critical to making a good decision here. And I also, you know, we're focused on the reserves, we're also buttressed here by one-time permit revenue. We don't have reason to believe that we're going to see that type of revenue again. There may be large projects, there may be several projects, but, you know, we, in addition to the leaning on reserves, there's also leaning on one-time revenue here. So I'll just leave it there, and if my colleagues have anything else to say, I'll listen.
Still, no one's asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Harris with a minute left.
Okay, I'll speak quickly. Personnel does not go down. Insurance is not going to go down, salaries are not going to go down. Those things consistently go up. We need personnel to run the city, so that's a cost that's going to go up. My councilmembers, or one councilmember, believes in, and we had this discussion, I don't believe in the nickel and diming, charging for parking, charging for this. If we know at the end of the day, we need to collect $100 from people, we need to be honest and upfront and say that, and not say, we're going to charge you 20 here, 13 there, 7 there, 18 cents per second. We need to just say what it is and deal with that. Pensions, we've committed to doing the right thing. We've seen that our surrounding communities are looking at playing with pensions. I'm retiring in the next two to three years. I understand what that means, and we want to be very clear and upfront with our safety workers. These people put their lives on the line, and to be able to make it out of that, they deserve the pension that we set. So we need to make sure we're taking care of that. We do need to slow down spending. We come up with some great ideas, and we just have to slow that down, but that doesn't change the cost of the things that we need to do. I believe we should do flat budgets. As a city manager, he can, he has the ability to tell people, you can't raise your budget, this is what you'll need to figure out what you need to do. And I had to do that at Oakton, actually had to give back 5% last year. And you make it happen. You figure out in that department, you let that department figure out what that looks like. So we do need to have flat budgets. Again, police and fire, we know they have to move. We know, or changes have to be made to their facilities. That's a known factor in the discussion. Fear of the unknown does not stop it from happening. So we have to be prepared, and I feel bad, again, everybody seems to be raising taxes and levies, and we have to figure out how to have that discussion as a city as well, but that can't stop us from doing what we need to do as the city, making sure we take care of it. Because I hate to be in a place where we say, we're sorry, we don't have the money, and then we're tens of millions of dollars short. We had a fake, excuse me, we have a false positive with the ARPA funds. That's gone. We're not going to get that. That's not going to happen again unless some catastrophe happens, and I don't want that to not raise taxes. So ARPA gave us a sense of all of this money that we could be flexible with that we're not going to have again. So I do think we need to have better accountability, but I think it's the right thing to do. Whether I'm fortunate enough that people in the Second Ward, and it's not everybody, but they understand what is looming, and they want to get in front of it. If you can't do 3% now, if you have to do 10% next year because we didn't do the two now, what service are we really providing our residents? They're still going to be underwater. So, thank you.
Still, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Nusma with 2 minutes and 50 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Burns and Councilmember Reed are right. We do have excess reserves, but we are, and Councilmember Burns said, this budget for 2025 still keeps us above our 16.6% policy. That's true. But unless we do something, the following year, 2026, we will be below that 16.6% reserve policy, and the year after that, 2027, we will be down close to zero. And as Councilmember Harris is arguing, you know, we are trying to protect our residents, not only the Fourth Ward, but throughout Evanston, you know, from having to endure the pain of a, let's say, 10% property tax increase in a couple of years, and allowing them some time to kind of gradually accommodate to an increase by taking a small step now and a small step later. It's a philosophical approach that I am arguing is the better approach, that we start pulling the lever a little bit now so we don't have to yank it back so hard in a year or two where it really causes everybody a lot more pain. Thank you.
At this time, no one whose time has not elapsed is asking to speak, so we'll go back to Councilmember Kelly and ask you to be very, very brief with your comments, please.
Thank you. So people are hurting financially, and we need to be sensitive to that. ETHS is going to raise its taxes considerably, and as Councilmember Sufferdin pointed out, it's a whole package, fees, fines, everything, including property taxes. We need to look at discretionary spending. I want to also look at our CIP. We really need to look at that and, and how we can, you know, find efficiencies. But first and foremost, we really need to tighten our financial accuracy with regard to projections on revenue and expenditures. We, in my opinion, have no right to raise taxes when we miss the mark by so much, by $105 million in '23 in expenses, and we're going to raise taxes by 1.5. We have got to get this under control, where we have a more of an accurate idea of even our needs for maintaining our buildings. So at our last Finance and Budget meeting, there was questions about, you know, this bond, issuing another bond. We issued one this year for about $32 million and issued another one next year for about $22 million. And about, and then that, we're actually going to roll off about 10, so we would be increasing yet again our overall debt, which is enormous. And I do want to point out, and I'll make it, I'll try and keep this relatively brief, but previous terms that kept kicking that can down the road, folks should know that this year in debt alone on that public safety pensions, what would have cost us a little over $5 million for police and fire, had we not been just not fully funding it, that's what it would have cost us instead this year, just in financing it. Our taxpayers are paying purely in financing and interest about $14 million, $15 million just to finance that debt that got kicked down the road by so many previous terms. So I'm concerned also about increasing that debt. That's, you know, $15, $14 million for nothing, right? Because we just didn't want to fully fund those pensions over many, many years. So I do, I am very interested in looking at efficiencies, at looking at our capital improvement budget and to see, so we don't have to issue yet more debt. I mean, that's an incredible amount of money that we're paying just on that. And again, I think we absolutely have to look at our, our whole, the whole package of what it's costing residents to live in this city, for lower and middle-income residents. And we have to start, one last, one last point, and then I'll be done.
We'll be in a new one.
And we have to start referencing our actual budget, because again, it's important to note that it was a $298 million budget just a year ago, and we're jumping up to $400 million, and you all want to increase it even more. So we have to refer to our actual budget and then adjust for any increases, you know, that happened that, that current year before we just base it on an adopted budget. So I think that's all. Thank you.
There's still nobody is asking to speak either for a first or second time or without their time being expired, so Councilmember Reed, I'll ask you to be extremely brief as well.
Yes, I will be faster than. So, one, I just want to make two closing points. When we talk about nickeling and diming residents, there, we're not just one, there are many, many services that the city provides. And by looking at the property tax as if it's the unified way to pay for all of those services, what we're actually doing is we're taking, for example, I don't own a car. Why, if I'm not using parking and the roads and the many residents out there who are doing, you know, who aren't, why should they be paying for, at the same rate, road maintenance, parking and other, just to subsidize people for parking when we should actually charge, like you said, we shouldn't nickel and dime folks, we should charge them what the service costs, what it costs to maintain the assets or somewhere close to that. And so I think we, again, really have to reassess the way that we look at property taxes, not just as the one lever we pull, but really look at the individual services that we provide to residents and begin to, if we need to raise the revenue, begin to charge appropriately for those services, especially for things that aren't critical to human life and survival in our. in our cities, such as water and shelter. Lastly, I'll say that, to Councilmember Sufferden's point, we don't quite understand the impact on assessments. We know that commercial properties may be impacted differently, and, you know, apartment buildings may be impacted differently than single-family homes, and especially the number that we're using, which I actually think would be closer to $54 rather than 48, but maybe I'm wrong on that. We're not appropriately assessing this, and I think it's appropriate for us to take another year to understand, to understand our financial situation, the financial picture better. And so I would encourage us to adopt this, adopt item SP8 as it is proposed, and take 2025 to interrogate new sources of revenue. And I'll just add this one last thing, we could get $500,000 to $800,000 just by increasing or establishing fire usage fees for large nonprofit institutions like our neighbors at Northwestern. That's $500,000 to $800,000 that could significantly offset even the proposed $1.5 million, that $1.4 million increase this year. And so we have a whole host of levers that will not impact residents of Evanston, that we could be pulling, that we're not pulling, and that I think that if people had the opportunity to interrogate, they'd be asking us to do that before we increase property taxes. Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
I'm confusing me where I'm supposed to be. Harris said no, but they, yes, what's going on? Aye, I think, aye, yeah.
And Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries an ordinance. 78-0-24 is passed. Is there another motion on perhaps a series of ordinances?
I will move items SP9, SP10, SP11, SP12, SP13, SP14, SP15, SP16.
Councilmember Reed moves adoption of, hold on, everybody, ordinance, ordinances 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, and 85-0-24, as well as resolutions 55 through 71-r-24. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Councilmember Harris?
Councilmember Wen?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and just to read them again, ordinances 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, and 85-0-24, as well as resolutions 55 through 71-r-24 are passed. Now, on item SP17, Councilmember Reed.
I will move item SP17, ordinance 77-0-24, approving the fiscal year 2025 budget of the city of Evanston. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves adoption of ordinance 77-0-24. Councilmember Herakaris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Sorry, y'all slipped, was this, is this SP17?
Yes.
I definitely wanted to talk about CIP, I'm sorry. I got, there's been a lot moving up here.
We're in the middle of a roll call.
I know.
Does someone wants to withdraw the motion?
I withdraw my motion.
I would appreciate that, yes.
All right, do you want to make the motion again now?
I will move, now, I will move item SP17, ordinance 77-0-24, approving the fiscal year 2025 budget of the city of Evanston. Is that a new loophole that if we're in the middle of a vote, you can just pull?
I don't know, I mean, it's.
We haven't done it before. We, we've, we've never.
Prove it, and then somebody could.
Move to reconsider?
Exactly.
Yeah, we've continued voting.
Which I appreciate. This one fast.
I don't want to break any rules. Okay, so there's, at the time that I messed up with my undue leniency, let's be a lesson to me for next time, I think we were still awaiting the votes of Councilmembers Burns and Sufferden. Could the clerk please continue the roll?
Um, no.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries an ordinance. 77-0-24 is adopted. Councilmember Burns?
Oh, it would have to be me. Motion to reconsider.
He's on.
He voted no.
Anyone, but, right, sorry, all right, well, who is next? Councilmember Reed.
I move to reconsider item SP17.
I'll second.
Clerk. Is this debatable?
Uh, Councilmember Reed moves to reconsider the vote on ordinance 77-0-24. Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries, and the initial motion is reconsidered. Councilmember Reed, do you have a motion to make?
I think it's now reconsidered.
Oh, it's reconsidered automatically?
Yeah, it's before us, right? Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, well, the motion is before us then, great. Councilmember Burns?
So, Councilmember Sufferden.
Actually, just pausing your time, there were a lot, a blizzard of lights went on, and then they all went off again, so the only person I've got in line is Councilmember Burns. If you think you're in line, you're not, so just switch your light back on if you want to get back in line. But Councilmember Burns, go ahead.
Yeah, Councilmember Sufferden made a point, I think it was also made by, I think it came up also in the discussion I had with staff earlier, that the consequences of not doing things this year that we know we're going to do eventually will result in, in increase of, you know, construction costs and maybe design costs for some of these as well. I have not, while I've considered it, I don't, I don't know how, you know, how it would be impacted, that's something that we will still have to figure out. I think my exercise was this, is we are in a year where I don't think we're going to increase the property tax this year, the property tax levy, and.
We just voted on that.
We just voted on that. And so the, the point is, it's, it doesn't feel like a year to be adding to our debt service, right? Which is adding to the structural deficit that you've heard everybody up here talking about. That doesn't seem fiscally responsible to me. And so the exercise that we asked staff to do in the Finance and Budget Committee, I think I was the one that, that asked staff to do this, was to take a look at our 20-something million, or maybe it's more than that, I don't even know the total amount, is it that? 20, what is it? So 21.3 million was a GOB, and to, to understand what would we have to reduce or eliminate from, from, from this year's GOB request to not increase our debt service for next year, right? Because we have a certain amount of debt rolling off, and so in a perfect situation, as we're rolling off debt, we're taking on new debt, but it doesn't add to the structural deficit, right? That's the perfect scenario in my mind. I don't know if we're going to get to, to 10 million, or 12, or whatever is needed. I think, at first I thought it was 10, it might even be 12 million that we would need to find in order to keep it flat. But regardless, the, I still think it makes sense to take a look at how we're spending on our GOBonds, to think about if it's something that we can carry over to next year, in an effort to reduce, reduce debt service, reduce the interest payments that we'd be paying, et cetera. So the first one is Lincoln Street, $300,000. It's for, the way I understand it is, is to start, I don't even know if it's construction, I think it's to understand how to put a bike path on Lincoln, starting at Sheridan, going all the way to, I don't know, the Cross Street, to Green Bay Road. And I don't know if Sarah Fiorito is here, but I'd like to understand how this is, falls within an overall kind of pedestrian bike plan that we have, because I'm not sure if we even have that yet. And so this one may be a good one to say, let's hold off this year for reasons that are already described, plus, because I think in a perfect scenario, we would kind of fold this into a comprehensive approach to, you know, adding bike infrastructure to our community. So I wanted to start here.
Members of the City Council, my name is Laura Biggs, I'm the city engineer. So the Lincoln Street project is one that has been requested by a group of people in northeast Evanston, but including the Design Evanston Group, that is currently working on the Lincoln Street Bridge project with the city of Evanston. Because we designed bridges for 100 years, we provide the width to be able to add bike lanes to bridges, and they feel that it would be good to be looking at the whole corridor, which is a marked bike route.
I'm happy to have people jump in, Mary, just if we want to do it that way.
Councilmember Ravel?
Excuse me. As I recall, Laura, in fact, the total budget for the, for Lincoln Street is, is already, you've already divided it into two years' worth?
No, the $300,000, this is one that we cut it back for a variety of reasons, it's not a good grant funding opportunity, and so we don't have to do quite as robust a planning process. So we reduced the cost that was shown in the budget, but we would need, the, the cost is $300,000 to do the planning process.
Got it, okay, yeah. No, so I definitely have heard from a number of residents about the need to improve, particularly to improve bike safety on Lincoln, not just for grownups, but for, there are a lot of kids who bike to get to Haven and Kingsley, and, and this is an opportune time to do it, because we are in the final design stages for completely rebuilding the Lincoln Street Bridge, and, you know, widening the bridge, providing bike lanes on the bridge, et cetera. We need to make sure that they connect with bike lanes in the, in the street. So I would argue that it's important to have that expense this year.
Councilmember Kelly?
So, just a point of clarification, so on these charts here, this, this represents all of the expenditures for a proposed, was it 22 million?
Yes.
So, but it says the total on the bottom, when I go to the total, it says, okay, so let's see, total 11.210, okay, so in the parentheses, that ref, okay, got it. All right, so that's for the 22. And can you just, like, overall, because I remember in Finance and Budget, when we discussed this, and one of your responses was that if we were to cut it in half, this would greatly undermine our ability to maintain basic part, to do basic maintenance on our parks and facilities, which really concerned me, because we shouldn't be bonding out, that should be an integral part of our regular budgeting, maintaining our parks and facilities. So that was a concern then, I mean, when you said that, for me, because I really do want to make sure that this is integrated into our regular annual budgets, not bond money. That's 20 years of debt on our residents' shoulders. So when you were selecting these, can you just, can you go over a little bit the, I assume you, did you, Councilmember Reed, did you, were you, I mean, Burns, I'm sorry.
And I wasn't done yet, I was really just hoping that people would chime in on the Lincoln Street, if, and then I was going to keep going.
I was just trying to understand how.
I was going to go over some of my notes.
All right, all right, good enough. I just didn't understand how we got to this selection.
But basically, my understanding is this is, these are all the projects, the ones in yellows are all the projects that we have not started yet. So everything that we've started, or has matching grant funds, or is not a GOB item, a general, general obligation bond, bond item, is, is not highlighted. Everything that's highlighted are projects that we have not started yet.
That is substantially true, with the exception of some critical projects to move forward, the police-fire headquarters, to start consulting on that. There's a large project at the service center to improve electrical and HVAC, and then a third project having to do with providing locker, appropriate locker rooms for women firefighters at Fire Stations 1 and 3. So because those three are really critical public safety facility improvement projects, we are recommending those move forward, and then any projects that are already ongoing, or the funding is for matching grant funds.
And those are already, those aren't highlighted in yellow. I'll, I'll quickly try to go through this, because I think it'll, that'll answer everybody's questions. Again, the 300,000, initially, when it goes back to kind of budgeting in the way that I think everybody else budgets, it's not a question of if we're going to do it, it's when. And so, again, I'm not saying that bike infrastructure on Lincoln doesn't make sense, there's tons of streets in the Fifth Ward where I love bike infrastructure. The question is, can we hold off on this for next year, unless there's, unless it's going to be a, a bike infrastructure where there's like a curb, and, and, you know, if it's just striping, there's nothing about this project that we would have to undo if we did bike lanes later. And I don't know if that's true or not, but if we ended up, you know, unless we're going to go with, with something more solid to kind of separate the, to create a kind of more defined, protected bike lane, there's nothing we'd have to undo, again, by striping it later. So those are, it's not a question of whether or not, all these are great projects, is the question is, do we really need to do it next year, or can we do it in 2026? So real quick, the next one is traffic calming, bicycle and P and D improvements, construction, 360,000. I think we've identified some of the projects, but not the speed humps, for example. So can we collect the projects in 2025, all the speed hum projects, and do those in 2026, right? Like, do we need to, to get that money now, or can we just say, we're going to figure out what, what all the projects are in 2025, so that we can do them in 2026? And, and I think there's, there's some other, you know, projects that, that we have in there. Same thing with sidewalk gap and fill. I think many of these I would support. I think sidewalks, Benson from Davis is about, there's a safety concern there, so I would support that. Sidewalk improvement program is starting on our Phase 1 sidewalk program, but sidewalk gap and fill construction, 300,000, is that something that, that, that we could move to 2026? Fountain Square improvements, 1.7. I'm someone that has spoke, you know, in support of this. Do we need to do that next year? 1.7 million for construction, plus 250,000, right? Do we have to do that next year? Pickleball court, same thing, right? Again, I support pickleball courts. I, I don't make, I don't know if I'm the only pickleball player up here, but I play. Maybe others do. But is that a need, a need for next year? So again, there's quite a bit of these. Philbrook Park, I think we said that we were going to, I talked to you, Laura, my question on that is, can we remove that, because we think the internal staff person is going to take that on? We have it listed here as 150. And so I thought in a conversation that we had, you said that, that we're going to, we've hired somebody new, and so we're going to try to have that person take on Philbrook Park renovations, designs, and great part. But we still have Philbrook Park listed here under consulting, so we, can we remove 150?
Yes, we could remove that 150.
So my, my point is, I could keep going, like, by doing this type of exercise, you know, this is what we should be doing every year. I don't know the best process, you know, the best way to do this, but, you know, I can, I can keep going. There's some things on here that I don't think we need to do next year, that we could delay till, until 2026. I've identified, if, if we wanted to include the 300, you know, we could, for the bike thing, I don't know if that's something we need to do, but there's quite a bit of these. I talked to the, the chief, we got 400,000, I think, for the kitchen. We want to do the kitchen eventually. I think they're more concerned about the locker rooms, which I really, was, absolutely support, but after talking to the chief pilot, he said, you know, we probably could hold off on upgrading the kitchen for next year. That's 400,000. So, you know, again, what, we, if, if we can hold it off until next year, we should do that. And that's, that's what I would propose. So I'll open it up to other comments and questions, happy to make motions, I, I'm not going to waste my time if there's not support, but I just wanted to, to demonstrate that there are things in this budget that we don't have to do next year, that we can move it to 2026, put it at the top of the list for 2026, but that we could defer to try to reduce the amount of debt service we're paying for next year, which will give us some time to figure out property tax increase, new sources of revenue, et cetera. That's all.
Councilmember Reed?
I am appreciative of Councilmember Burns for going through this exercise with staff, and really appreciative of staff for going through the exercise. And I, I could get behind a number of these. I think just about everything I heard. I guess what I'm thinking is, none of them seem, you know, like steel intensive or iron intense or the kind of materials that are like that may increase more so over the next year or so than other items. I don't know where we import most of our concrete for speed bumps and paint from. But, you know, maybe those tariffs could potential tariffs could impact that. But, you know, for the things that I think will have minimal inflationary growth over the next year. So I do think that those are programs, as well as the criteria that was laid out by Laura. I think it makes sense for us to potentially pull back on those for 2025. So I would be supportive of a motion that is made.
And again, I'm happy to move this forward. I think Hattas, she's not here anymore, but Clayton can speak to this, that even if we support this today, we don't have to issue the bonds or something like that. If we find other ways to pay for it, I think I've heard Hattas say that a few times. Because I understand that this is not necessarily the best way to do this. I've taken the time to go through these items with staff, even this, the 150 for Philbrook Park. And like I said, Fountain Fountain Square, pickleball court, there's 200,000 here for tennis courts to renovate rehab tennis courts. You know, we got a lot of tennis courts. That's probably something we can hold off doing until next year. So again, I understand this probably isn't the best way to do it. But if we can I maybe support approving this. And then if we can have this discussion at APW, if that's the appropriate place, and then I can, you know, I could provide this to everybody on APW in writing with some of my notes, and then we could discuss it there.
Councilmember Reed, just off the floor.
I didn't realize that. I'm done with the floor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am prepared to approve the budget as is with the CIP as has been presented. This is the tonight is now the fifth or sixth time that we have seen the CIP. This in and of itself is only a portion of everything that we need to do. This is already a pared down CIP. And there are things highlighted in yellow here that were supposed to have been done this year, but didn't get done. Anything we don't do next year is going to cost even more money the following year. Exactly how much? Not a macro economist, macro economist economist, even they don't know. I certainly don't know. So I think it makes sense to pass the CIP as is and pay for it next year because it's going to hurt even more the following year, when, thanks to the 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 property tax levy we just passed, we're going to be looking at a pretty big hurt this time next year. So I'm ready to go with this. Thank you.
Just one more question if I can.
No. If you want to sign up, you can. But there's others in line. Yeah. At this time, no one's asked to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Kelly with 4:45 left.
Thank you. So I think, you know, the message, what I hope staff is hearing from us is that I think there are many things in here that could be eliminated and put off for next year. And I think it's a lot. I think we need everybody here that works at the city to fully understand how much people are hurting in Evanston with the cost of living here, and to really look at these items. I can find a bunch now, too. And I deeply appreciate Councilmember Burns' effort to highlight this and to work on this. I mean, I think even as much as I, you know, voted in favor of the Divvy Bikes, we still have to work out a bike plan. That'll probably take it, you know, go well into next year. So we might not really need to purchase those into the following year. And I'm sure Philbrook Park, there's are the light modernization. There's so much that we really don't have to do next year. And if there is a really deep understanding here at this city of how people are hurting this city from the cost of living here, it is expensive to live here. And, you know, with regard to property taxes, we do have a very still, it's regressive in terms of valuation in this town. So middle and low income people are hurting. So I don't think I think it's arduous work to go through this now. And it looks like, you know, we're not going to do this. But I would ask that, you know, coming back in future years and now, that this was top on staff's minds, our senior management, wow, you know, we really need to figure out what we what we don't need to add. Our, you know, our, our debt is enormous in the city. I won't go on a lot. But I think if I'm not mistaken, that this is going to push us over. This wasn't brought to our attention when we were asked to approve the resolution for this bond. It's going to push us, I believe, over our self imposed debt limit of 155 million. I know at the end of 120, at the end of 23, we had 127 million dollars in debt. And then in 24, we issued 32. I know only 17.1, I believe, was in tax, the GOB on, you know, accounts towards that. And then in 25, it'll be in another, you know, 23 or 24, that pushes us well over our debt limit. And I think, don't we have to approve that to say we're ready to go exceed our self imposed debt? We don't. We just do it. We don't have to talk about it. We just do it. 155, right? But in at the end of 23, we had a GOB, a tax supported GOB on debt of 127, 126.7. Last year, this year, we issued 32, of which I was, I think you told me 17.1 of that was tax supported GOBonds. And then next year, how much of that 22? So 26 and?
But we would pay off another 12 million this year, right now, like we just paid off today.
Right, right. So if you take off the 10, but that's then, so we have 126 plus 17 plus?
143 less 10, 133.
No, 126 and 17 is what we issued. We rolled off 10. So where are we at? Where will our total debt be? When we issue this 22 million?
It would be less than 155 million, around 133.
Around what?
133 million. Right now, I see the numbers. As of when we are ready to issue the bonds, whether in the late spring, mid summer, wherever, yeah, next year.
So it'll be at 133, our total, our total net supported GOBond. Okay.
And we looked at it.
I mean, it's really.
We would be, we won't need.
Right. And that's not counting, sorry, but our IPA loans, our, you know, our pension debt. I mean, it goes on and on. We are close to half a billion. So, okay, so it won't exceed that. But it's certainly getting close. And again, we're paying so much just in interest and fees. So I just ask that we I feel like this shouldn't be on council to do so much work to figure out what we really don't have to spend on next year. But I appreciate Councilmember Burns doing that. I just ask that in the future, that there's tremendous sensitivity shown towards the residents, particularly the lower and middle income residents of the city. Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Revel with 3 minutes and 50 seconds left.
Well, it seems to me that we've talked about the all these items quite a bit already on several occasions, and a lot of work's been done to prune them as much as we can. And we could always obviously do more. But I think I think what we've got right now is is a is a program that's had a lot of thought put into it. And and not just the city council's been discussing this. When we start mentioning tennis courts and pickleball, I mean, we I can't count the number of meetings that that Audrey Thompson has had to have to talk to the pickleball and tennis communities. And they are, they do not want to have anything postponed, let me tell you. So I think we need to go ahead and and approve this project for this year, this program.
Still, no one is asking to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Reed with 3 and 1/2 minutes left.
Thank you. So part of the law, so part of the logic for just going with what has been proposed is folks are saying, oh, it's going to cost more next year. It's going to cost more in the years to come. Well, heck, if that's the logic, I've got parks and roads and all kinds of infrastructure in my ward that needs to be improved. So let's just throw it on here this year. So we can save money. That's not how you how you how you budget. And so you have to make decisions that sometimes mean, yeah, down the road, you're going to pay a bit more. But you can't do everything at once. And, you know, God forbid that we offend the pickleball players and the tennis players. But, you know, 650,000 for and I support it. And I think it's something we should be doing at some point. But do we need to allocate $650,000 this year while we are facing this, you know, budget deficit that we have to control and figure it out? And we haven't quite figured it out yet. And so because we haven't quite figured it out yet, it makes sense to not add 1.5 million dollars to our to the structural deficit when we know that 2.5 million dollars is coming in 2026 because of the grocery tax. We know that 2.5 roughly million dollars annually is coming because of the new lease at 909 Davis. We know that we have these huge payments that are coming down the line that are structural, and we need to make sure that we're not adding more structural debt until we figure out the revenue that is going to support that. And so I think it would be a shame for us not to seriously consider really rolling back all of these. I appreciate Laura and the team for and Councilmember Burns for figuring out a formula to come up with roughly 10 million dollars to roll back. But if not going with the full plan, I think it's irresponsible not to think about some of the items and rolling them off of our off of off of the rolls for now. With the remainder of my time, I quickly want to highlight another issue in the budget that I don't that I think the media should cover. We had folks in public comment highlight PB. I don't know if there's another agenda item on that. I don't think there is another agenda item. But I want to thank Councilmember Hedekatis, Manager Stowe, and others for, well, it's not the exact way that I would have wanted to see it done, but it's a good good start. We've got, I think, 45 to 50,000 dollars set aside for participatory budgeting for 2025. I will just note that I do think that we may need to get the band back together. There is a PB committee that was comprised of myself, Councilmember Burns, Mayor Biss, and Councilmember Nusma. I think Councilmember Hedekatis would need to be added to that or swapped in for someone who is done with that. And I think that that committee needs to come back and begin to play this a similar function that it played the last time we did PB, to help us make sure that the program is properly established and that we have buy in from the council, from a good number of members the whole way through. And so I will make that pitch. And I don't know, procedurally, since we are voting on the money today, whether as the former chair, I don't know if the committee dissolved. I don't remember it officially dissolved. Maybe it didn't. But the procedure for bringing that committee back for the 2025 PB process. So I'll just leave that there. Thank you.
Councilmember Hedekatis.
Yeah, so I think so we, thanks to Manager Stowe for figuring out the the financial part of the administration cost for PB. I think when I spoke with City Manager Stowe today, I brought up possibility of like a steering committee that I think would make sense to convene, because we are doing a little bit of shift of focus. And basically running the PB, the thought is to run the PB program in 2025, and then fund capital projects for 2026. And so there's a little bit of kind of administrative tweaks that we need to do. So it would be make sense to have a standing committee to figure that out and work with Professor Easterday and the Open Democracy folks to figure that out.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. No one is requesting to speak for a second time whose time has not expired. So we'll go next to Councilmember Kelly for a third opportunity with a minute and 1/2 left.
Thank you. So I concur that I I hope that I would just ask that we work closely with the team, with the Open Democracy team. I think they show that, you know, they really, they have great experience. They did a great job in recruiting people and really engaging the community. So I would just ask that we're not paying for any salaries for them. They have offered to volunteer and to work with our staff, so that they're fully incorporated as partners as we figure out how that's going to work in 26. So I'm glad that we will continue that. I think initially, I wasn't for it years ago when it first came up. But after seeing the robust community participation, I think it is really important. And I think they did, you know, wonderful work. So I did have one more question about the water fund, if I can, while we're on budget still. Could you? So I know I'm going back to the surplus. But in the water fund, we have a reserve policy of 5.8 million, which I questioned last time. But I see in the budget memo that it's 8.7 million in surplus in the water fund at least. I'm guessing all these surpluses will probably actually end up being more. But 8.7 million. And when I was asked, when I asked about it, it said that it was so big because we issued the bonds for 18 million. So how much of that is that 8.7 million surplus that's listed as surplus in the budget memo? Is that all from the bond that we issued? It is? Okay. It's, you know, okay. So that's 18, 8 points. So we took from that 18 million, 8.7, it says, which are all for projects that we're slowly spending down. Once again, it's listed as surplus money. But if it's designated for projects, then it should be assigned for the projects, and it shouldn't be listed as. Because we have, we have a we have a reserve of 5.8 million. That's just money sitting there for a rainy day emergency. On top of that, we have 8.7 that's listed as excess surplus funds on top of the assigned money. So again, if we're spending that down as part of the bonds, because it was earmarked for certain projects, that needs to be listed in the restrict or assign. That's all. And if I could get a list of what that I would really like to see what that 8.7 million dollar surplus is, in fact, earmarked for. So I'll email you about that. Thank you.
At this time, no one who has any time left is requesting to speak. So Councilmember Burns, if you could be very brief with your comments.
The, as I, as I pointed out earlier, the point of the exercise that I talked about is, in a perfect world, we're rolling off enough debt to where we're not adding to our debt service the next year. Right? So again, it's frustrating up here. Sometimes I'll say something, and then it gets like oversimplified. We all know that we need to support our CIP program, right? We understand things are going to cost more, you know, in the future, or they likely will. But that's not what I that's not the conversation I was having. What I was saying is, if we can discipline ourselves, we could get into a situation where we're rolling off enough debt to where we're not adding to our debt service, which is adding to our structural deficits. So for the public, you heard us say, I think it's a 10 million dollar deficit, 12 million. So but by adopting this, the CIP program, we're adding to it, right? In a year where we haven't yet decided how we're going to pay for it. We're not adding to the structure. Okay, so please explain then.
No, that debt service does add to the structural deficit, not starting for 2020.
Let me just, yeah. So and then, yeah, you can ask the question. What we are doing, talking about deficit in terms of general fund, our main fund, where we have 10 to 12 million deficit for upcoming year, even for this year. When you issue the CIP, obviously, even if we issue the GOBonds, and that would be a debt service levy, it has no impact on our general fund deficit or surplus.
Are we paying for that debt service?
It is paid out of the debt service tax levy, which is, which doesn't go into the general fund. It goes into the debt service fund. So it has nothing to do with the general fund deficit or surplus.
And how do we does that? How is it funded? How is that fun funded?
By the tax levy.
And so it goes up automatically? Or you come back and say when you need an increase? Or how do how are we?
Yeah, we submit. I mean, whenever we issue the bond, we have to submit the bond order and ordinance to the Cook County. If we want to abate any amount, we file those resolutions, which you just approved. So Cook County already has our debt schedule.
This requires another conversation. Because what I'm trying to understand is, we know we're going to add 1 point something million to that debt service.
Correct.
And you're saying we already have that. We don't need to get additional funds from the public to pay for that.
No, we, yes, it will be a tax levy. It will be a additional property tax money, but it has no impact on general fund deficit or surplus, which is 10 to 12 million dollars, which we are talking about.
Just point of information, it could, because just as we've done in previous years, while our levy has remained flat, we've decreased in some areas and increased in other areas, keeping the overall levy flat. And so to Councilmember Burns's point, if we were to reduce our need to for the debt service fund, for the debt service levy, we could reduce by 1.5 million debt service levy, increase somewhere else, and still keep the levy flat. So.
Right. But I mean, it's not a general fund thing. It's like you have to consider these as the all separate for this is a CIP fund, and it is fully funded. Whenever we issue the bonds, it is fully funded by the debt service tax levy. Yes, our portion of tax bill goes up. Yes.
Right, right. Okay. And I think to taxpayers, it's all the same, right? It's money that we have to figure out how to get from them. So but what I do want to do, though, is just make sure, if Laura's still here, I think we were on the same page that we could and this is in the fifth ward. So everybody. relax, this is a fifth ward park. I've talked to Laura about this already. I think we can remove Philbrook, Philbrick Park Consulting, 150,000, because we're going to use, we're going to use the new person that we hired to do that. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to remove Philbrick Park Renovations Consulting, 150,000 dollars from the 2025 GO bond CIP program.
Second.
So you have a motion in a second, so could you put that in writing now, please? Are you okay if we go on down the list while you're, okay. So while we're waiting for the motion to come in in writing, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Nusma with 3:45 left.
As much as I really like the idea of saving money on parks planning by bringing some of that work in-house, have we not already released the RFP for the consulting services for Phillet Park, Philbrick Park? And what has that made if we make, if we approve this?
We actually had, we were going to add that to an RFP that had already been released for Cartwright and Fitzsimmons, but we removed it because we got the person, we basically solidified a job offer, and a person is starting on Monday. And so we never did add Philbrick to that request for proposal.
Okay, so they're not in the RFP.
Yes.
So we can still accomplish that park renovation in the timeline that we've discussed by using our in-house person rather than assigning some of that cost to a bond?
Yes, that is our goal.
Councilmember, are you still, still writing?
Yes.
All right, so while, while Councilmember Burns continues to write, Councilmember Kelly, your time is up, but if you could take a few moments while we're waiting for the emails to arrive.
I just wonder if this is the best way to go through this, if this, I mean, tonight, I mean, I'm looking over this now, too. Again, I think, you know, I see we have consulting for Cartwright, Fitzsimmons, Philbrick. We hired somebody now for, right? Did we not hire a landscape architect? I mean, I was, I think there's probably a lot of areas in here we could cut. It just seems like this is.
Let me respond to that question.
Yeah.
No, it's not the best way to do this. The best way to do this was months ago, but that was not a choice that you made.
Well, we did express this. No, we did. We made it very clear that we wanted, we did not want to issue yet more debt on our residents, and we had hoped that this would come back, and this is what we're looking at now. So I, I think that we have given our direction to staff, many of us have, to say, we don't want to leverage yet more additional debt on our residents. So, you know, I feel like this is really staff's job to figure out what really is essential, the most important, and I don't, so, you know, I, I guess I feel a little bit frustrated that we're just de facto, we're going to issue more debt on our residents, and that we're going to pick through this, but that's fine. We can do it this way. I, I think we should have had instruction earlier on to say, and we did, although I think we did at Finance and Budget, we said we don't want to issue more debt. So, okay. Anyway, that's fine. We can, how about, then can we reduce the consulting fees on Cartwright, Fitzsimmons, Philbrick? I believe, did we not hire a landscape architect?
Yeah, Councilmember, go ahead.
What is the plan here? Are we going to pick through each of these items, one at a time?
My sense of what's happening as we, as members' time is coming to an end, is that Councilmember Burns has found a specific item that he thinks the council would be comfortable removing, because there's a particular reason why it's perhaps duplicative, and it's also in the fifth ward. So there's a motion specifically for this. I didn't have the sense that there were going to be further motions beyond this, but if I'm wrong about that, someone should let me know. Because my sense is, there's all this discussion, was not conclusive, but there's this one area that where it may, may well be conclusive, and so that's the item now before us. Is that accurate?
Just as a quick point, we've talked a lot about up here saying we want more of this to be on staff. We've, staff has done their kind of job and hired somebody that can take on not only Philbrick, but also, I think, Great Park Design. There's a, it's budgeted for construction, but the, my understanding from talking to Laura is this new person can take on Philbrick Park design and also Great Park. So all I'm doing is, based on our conversation, removing 150,000, and that's all, that's the only motion I'm going to make, because I don't, I don't think there's an appetite to go beyond it.
Thank you.
All right, so this motion has been made and seconded, and it removes 150,000 from the 2025 CIP, and removes the Philbrick Park renovation from the associated description. No one with time left is requesting to speak. Councilmember Reed, are you wanting to speak on this motion?
Oh.
Oh, please.
I don't know if there's a second to it, was there?
I thought Councilmember Nusma seconded, didn't you? No, sorry.
Second.
Was that?
I'll second it now.
All right, so Councilmember.
No, I don't want to speak to this, so I'll.
Okay, so in that case, will the clerk please take the role on the motion to remove this single 150,000 item from the CIP?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye. But is, I thought it was two.
No, it's just.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 77-0-24 is accordingly amended. Councilmember Reed, your light is on now?
Yes.
So there's, your time has expired. How long do you believe you need?
Two seconds, or like five seconds, five seconds.
All right, Councilmember Reed, with five seconds.
I, I move that we table the budget to the 20, or to our next meeting, December 9th, I believe.
Okay, that's your five seconds. Is there a second?
Well, and then now, point of information, just for the chair, I'm curious, do we have a packed budget for the 9th? Is there any reason that?
Well, there's been, the short answer I would give is there's many items that have been delayed specifically so that we could go through the budget in these many recent meetings. Councilmember Reed moves that the, that ordinance 77-0-24, as now amended, is table, be tabled to the December 9th council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to table?
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Nope.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffordin?
No.
With two voting in favor and seven voting against, the motion fails, and the ordinance is not tabled. Now, will the clerk please take the role on ordinance 77-0-24, which has been amended by the removal of 150,000 from the CIP related to the Philbrick Park renovations?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
And Councilmember Burns?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 77-0-24, as amended, is passed. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I already have a pretty hefty list of things that I've been told need to be removed, so listen up. Items A2, A14, A21, P2, and HS1. Is there any additional item besides those five that needs to be removed from the consent agenda?
A16.
A16?
One.
P1, A16?
HS3.
Any further items? A2, A14, A16, A21, P1, P2, HS1, HS3. I would undertake a motion in that case?
I'll move second.
Second.
Councilmember Nguyen moves approval of the consent agenda with the following exceptions: Items A2, A4, A16, A21, P1, P2, HS1, and HS3. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Seeing no discussion.
You said A4, I think you meant A14.
What are you talking about?
Thank you. Let me read that again to make sure we're all on the same page. Councilmember Nguyen moves approval of the consent agenda with the following eight exceptions: A2, A14, A16, A21, P1, P2, HS1, HS3. Councilmember Reed, seconds.
Point of information, what is the item PB1? The 45,000, we just approved the budget, so what do we?
This is not about, this is about the past PB participatory budgeting. This is allocation of funding relative to the participatory budgeting that already occurred.
Yeah, that was, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the eight items previously read is passed. Now on item A2, Councilmember Harris, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move for the approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Harris moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordin?
I abstain.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries, and the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity is approved. Councilmember Harris, do you have a motion on item A14?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair. I move for the approval of the six-month contract extension for the energy services at 6.16?
Correct.
Yes.
6.1 cents per kilowatt hour.
Yes.
Is that a second or just a commentary?
Second.
And a second.
Councilmember Harris moves approval of the six-month contract extension with DynaG Energy Services. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Manager Pratt, do you have information to share with us?
Good evening. I'm Cara Pratt, the city's Sustainability and Resilience Manager. As you find in your inbox this evening, we have actionable electricity pricing for our municipal accounts. This is how we do business for executing contracts for electricity, because the markets change by the hour. And so fortunately, we have some cost reductions based on this measure, and we're going from 6.2 cents, as was in the memo, to 6.1 cents per kilowatt hour. Any questions?
Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, the contract extension is approved. Thank you very much, Cara.
Yes, thank you.
And now on item A16, Councilmember Harris, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move for the acceptance of $985,000 from the U.S. Department of Transportation Innovative Finance and Asset Concession Grant.
I second.
Councilmember Harris moves accept, approval of, moves acceptance, moves, Councilmember Harris moves that we accept the $985,000 USDOT grant. Councilmember Hadekatis, seconds. Councilmember Burns?
This committee sounds a little sketchy from what Councilmember Kelly described, and so I'd like an opportunity for staff to respond. Is this PAW, Putting Assets to Work?
Yes.
Yeah, somebody talked about, maybe it was, it was a public commenter. They talked about a committee that's going to be making decisions.
It was a public commenter, not a council.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Kelly, that was not, I attributed to that, to you in error. I apologize. It was a public commenter. I'd just like to clear things like this up, because somebody could hear that from the audience and take it however they want to. So can we, can you describe, please, what putting, what we're, you know, we're, we're accepting a grant, and as part of this, accepting this grant, we're also moving forward with a Putting Assets to Work process. And so which part of these, what, which part of the process has already been kind of defined and determined as opposed to what we still have the ability to weigh in on? There was a public commenter that mentioned a, a committee that would be negotiating contracts and different things, so could you shed more light on that for us?
Sure. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Burns, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the council. I'm Paul Zalmazak, I serve as Economic Development Manager. I will be one of two or three or maybe even a dozen staff members who are going to be working on Putting Assets to Work as we move forward, hopefully on February 2nd, after the city council reviews a contract that we're going to bring forward to the city council on, I believe it's January 13th. I don't know if those dates have been adopted yet. But that contract will be with the same individual that helped us through the incubator back in, I believe it was September when we started this, sorry, July of 2023. That particular, that particular consultant will build a local team that will take the city's, city council's direction. This consultant is an extension of staff. It will give us additional ability to go to the marketplace, find developers that will, that will partner with the city based on the direction the city council gives staff and the consultant. There isn't going to be a special committee. Everything will funnel through, I imagine, the Administration of Public Works Committee. It's city assets, and therefore that committee manages those. But simply put, it's, it really is kind of a real estate consultant with a, a kind of a planning and government background that will help us get to the marketplace with the ideas and the goals and the wishes of the city council. Is, I hope that's clear.
No, thank you. And if, if you can help just everybody understand, like, what, what comes first? Our direction, or have we authorized them to negotiate or do anything in advance, you know, of receiving direction from council?
Fair, fair enough. So first and foremost, I have up on the screen the, a reference to the Putting Assets to Work document that this city council approved. Again, the dates are listed on this slide. We, council approved this, when was this? April 29th, 2024. That was after six, eight months of work, which I believe we interacted with the council and presented updates during that time. The, the core of that work resulted in a list of assets that we're going to review. As you can see in the lower right-hand corner, there are three buildings that we're going to focus on, only because we've already started focusing on them. We've been talking about them for quite some time. I think arguably, I think some of the council members were here 20 years ago when some, some of these properties came up. And now we're in this new process for Putting Assets to Work, where we're going to focus on those three buildings. Why did we choose those three buildings? One, because you've already started focusing on them. Two, they're a compelling case. They're within a half mile of transit stations. That's the purpose of the grant is to fund the review, potential revenue streams from city assets located near transit facilities. So that's why the three are highlighted in the report. When we talk about Putting Assets to Work and the grant says the word redevelop, that doesn't mean that we're going to swing a demolition ball. Somebody who's more technical can tell me what that phrase is. But, or the wrecking ball. We're, that's not the plan necessarily. If this commit, if this city council wants to do that, and that's the direction, that's the direction we'll go. We're going to evaluate these assets in the context of the current marketplace and give you the opportunity to decide how to generate more revenue from that. And that might mean selling it. It might be mean ground leasing it and renting it. It might mean redeveloping and selling it. We don't know yet because we haven't hired our consultant to help us through that. That's coming up in the next eight weeks.
And what, what three facilities?
The ones we listed in the report that the council approved are the Civic Center, twenty-one hundred Ridge, Police and Fire Headquarters, and Noise Cultural Arts Center. Those are the three buildings.
And so my question is, would the consultant or the committee start to negotiate the sale, the lease, whatever, anything related to these three facilities without receiving council direction first?
No, absolutely not. And as it relates to this grant, we, we can't take any steps to do that before February second. And why February second? Because the U.S. Department of Transportation, A, wants us to have this council accept this grant this evening. And then secondly, we have to create a, a contract with the consultant that you have to approve that there. And then the U.S. Department of Transportation also approves it. We can't expend any dollars until that February second. So then on February second, what is the consultant going to do? That's for us to decide based on the scope of services and contract that we're going to lay out for your review on, on January thirteenth.
There it is. Yeah. Because I don't know if you mentioned that before, that we're gonna, maybe you did, but that you're gonna take the contract.
It's implied.
Yeah, I know you mentioned you're coming back to council, but I think it's important for people to know that it's the contract. So the document, of course, that is truly going to define what it is that they do for us, the consultants, the committee, et cetera, or more so the consultants, who will be leading the committee in many respects, I would imagine. Because I don't think the committee is going to go out and negotiate anything. That wouldn't be standard.
Right, and there's no committee.
I'm sorry.
There's no committee. There's a consultant and there's a council.
Okay, I, I don't even want to tell, but the consultant is the, the document that's going to define our relationship with that, the city's relationship with that consultant will be discussed on February likely.
January thirteenth.
January thirteenth. And so I encourage everyone that, that is concerned about this to, to be at that meeting so that you can, the document, the contract will be made public. You can review it. And if you have any concerns at that point, I would encourage you to make a public comment to that effect. Thank you.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Yeah, and I just want to, for the public out there, just let, let everyone know that, you know, when we discussed this back on April twenty-ninth, if you go and look at the city council agenda, there's the whole PDF and report of everything that, you know, they found in like their recommendations. And so I wish it were a little bit easier to find on the webpage, but, you know, it's, it's there for everyone to see.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
And councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, sorry, with eight voting in favor and one voting against, I apologize. The motion carries and the, the federal funding is accepted. Now on item.
Just point of personal privilege. I may have to be absent soon. Can we go to the HS items?
Is there any objection from members of council to skip to the items in the HS section?
We'll have to do them anyhow, so.
Well, eight twenty-one, let, let's just, it sounds like there's some, I think it'll take, probably take longer to argue than just to move through the agenda. Councilmember Revell, do you have a motion to suspend the rules relative to item A twenty-one?
Yes, I, I move to suspend the rules so we can.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Revell moves to suspend the rules so that ordinance hundred dash O dash twenty-four can be heard in one evening. Councilmember Reed seconds. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
The motion having received its required unanimous vote, the rules are suspended. Now, councilmember Harris, do you have a, or Revell, I suppose, do you have a motion relative to the ordinance?
Yes, I move that we approve ordinance one hundred dash zero dash twenty-four, amending city code to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses from eighty-one to eighty-two for the Celtic knot.
Second.
Councilmember Revell moves that ordinance hundred dash O dash twenty-four be passed in one action this evening pursuant to the rule suspension that just occurred. Councilmember Harris second. Is there any discussion?
Point of order, I just want to correct the record. I think councilmember Haraqaris seconded the motion the first time, not me.
Thank you for correcting the record. My apologies. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
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 Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
And councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the liquor license is approved. Now on item P one, councilmember Burns, do you have a motion?
I move fraction ordinance ninety-two O twenty-four, special use for planned development for a two-hundred-and-thirty dwelling unit building.
Second.
Councilmember Burns moves approval ordinance ninety-two dash O dash twenty-four. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking forward to approving this with one additional condition based on some follow-up conversations with the developer. I emailed this at seven oh three PM, but the developer is willing to formally commit to making these residential units all electric. And they're also committing to using their best efforts to include rooftop solar PV and ground source heat pumps, which is a geothermal system. So the language is in front of everybody. Be happy to read it, but it's pretty much what I just said.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves to amend ordinance ninety-two dash O dash twenty-four by adding subsection U to section four relative to electrification. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to amend?
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance ninety-two dash O dash twenty-four is amended as just described. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on the now amended ordinance?
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance ninety-two dash O dash twenty-four as amended is passed. Now on item P two, councilmember Burns, do you have a motion?
Move for action, ordinance ninety-five O twenty-four, special use for planned development for a mixed-use building sixteen twenty-one through sixteen thirty-one.
Second.
Councilmember Burns moves approval of ordinance ninety-five dash O dash twenty-four. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
I abstain.
With eight voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and ordinance ninety-five dash O dash twenty-four is passed. Now on item HS one, councilmember Reed?
I'll move item HS one, ordinance seventy O twenty-four, amending Title V, Chapter Three, Landlord and Tenant Regulations, Title Nine, Chapter Four of the City Code, Dogs, Cats, Animals, and Fowl. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of ordinance seventy dash O dash twenty-four. Councilmember Haraqaris seconds. Councilmember Nusma?
At the request of staff, I have emailed a motion to remove the language in this ordinance related to rabies inoculations because that's picked up in HS three.
Point of order. Yeah.
Councilmember Reed?
Point of order. So you're relying on this being passed through HS three? Is that what you're saying? Can anyone want, so staff requested that it be pulled out like that? Because that's what I heard from councilman Nusma, that staff requested that.
Good evening, Allison Leipzig, our Policy Manager. The, yes and no, the Animal Welfare Board made the recommendation and the Police Department made the recommendation. It was in, part of it, though, the language that's in HS one was not sufficient for the Police Department's comfort level. And so they gave, kind of, they put in their own ordinance to do it instead.
Okay, and.
Hold on. So this is, is this still a point of information?
This is.
Hold on, what's that? Do you, do you want to allow this, councilmember Nusma?
Well, the reason I, I ask is because, just to be clear, my understanding is that HS three was never, it didn't go through referrals. There aren't three councilmembers or two councilmembers and the city managers, city man drew supported this. So there's, I just don't know how this is before this body. And this also didn't go to Human Services. So how was there an ordinance before the council?
The language in HS one went through Human Services and EPD's just trying to strengthen the language.
Yeah, but you, the.
I mean, I guess if I could jump in here, I agree with what I believe to be sort of your implied point, which is that a mature legislative process should have like bills that get introduced and work their way through the process. That's not what our referrals process is. We've tightened things up somewhere, somewhat, but it isn't. Our referrals process is still, you enter a line into a spreadsheet, which is an idea. And there's no, no particular rule, or to my recollection, custom, that that idea needs to be covered by a single legislative item. So by my read of both the rule, but also how we've typically done it, HS one and HS three are both sort of under the umbrella of that initial referral.
No, the initial referral had nothing to do with HS three. And so I, I thought it was appropriate to add it on to HS one while we're there. And I still think it's maybe to follow procedure, you could pull the stuff from HS one out and only leave the stuff from HS three. But you certainly can't have just standalone HS three, which has nothing to do with the original referral, didn't go through the referrals process.
It'd be a loophole. I mean, that's not how referrals process works. I'm happy to suspend the rules, but I mean, this is a clear loophole. It's not how we design a referrals process. It's an ordinance. It should go through the referrals process.
All right. So I would, I would, if we want to, if folks want to move to suspend the rules when we get to HS three, I will not object to that. In the meantime, councilmember Nusma has made a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves to amend ordinance seventy dash O dash twenty-four to remove the section in nine dash four dash three dash four C that's about the inoculations. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's about the inoculate, okay. I mean, go ahead.
Will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to amend the ordinance that was just described?
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? And councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the ordinance is amended. Now on ordinance seventy dash O dash twenty-four as amended, will the clerk please take the roll?
Unless there's further discussion.
There's no lights, but I'm certainly.
Do I still have the floor?
No, but if you want the floor, you can turn your light on.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for amending this. Even as amended, I am not going to be supportive for reasons which I made clear last time. I am very concerned about the potential foreseeable unintended consequence of having landlords that currently allow dogs at, at their discretion. If we remove their ability to exercise some discretion, I am afraid that more landlords will choose not to allow dogs at all. And that would kind of have the unintended reverse consequence of what this, what this is trying to achieve. In addition, I'm also, you know, mindful of the feedback I've gotten from some fourth ward landlords that, you know, have indicated they're quite likely going to do this and as well as just being resistant to additional regulation, especially for the small businesses. That's all.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. I, I would beg to say that those same landlords came to you and said that if we pass the RLTO, that they were, there's going to be a mass exodus of landlords and that people are going to be selling off their buildings. And unfortunately for our Real Estate Transfer Tax Fund, that has not been the case. So at Margarita and all kinds of things where they've said that this, there's going to be this flood. This is not an ordinance that would in any way trigger, you know, some, some, whatever it is that they're concerned about. This ordinance still gives landlords the ability to, within reason, regulate their properties. Also, I, I think this reliance on this hypothetical that all of a sudden everyone's going to say no dogs allowed because they can't restrict the breed is, it's just a hypothetical, and I don't think it's borne out of anything other than just conjecture. It's, there's nothing that I can see that anybody has shown to back up that that will be the case. But what we do know is the case is that today, certainly, there are restrictions that ban people from having certain breeds. And there's no evidence, no strong evidence to show that any particular breed is, you know, worthy of a designation of banning them from housing. And so I, I would encourage us to move forward with this. If anything, the Animal Welfare Board wants us to go further. I'm supportive of that, but certainly I think the ordinance before us is a nice, happy middle ground between where the Animal Welfare Board wants us to go and where housing providers actually say they have concern, which is that they think that it's also a limitation on weight and a limitation on other items, which, as this is drafted, it is not. And so I would encourage support for this ordinance. And, you know, we'll, we'll be able to collect data moving forward and make any adjustments. But as it stands today, it's a nice, happy middle ground. Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revell?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns? And councilmember Saffredin?
No.
With four voting in favor and four voting against, the motion ties. As the chair, I break the tie by voting in the affirmative. With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion carries and ordinance seventy dash O dash twenty-four as amended is passed. Now on item HS three, is there a motion? Councilmember Reed?
I have no motion because I believe this is out of order and we'll have to send this through referrals. And so if the folks have removed it, just set us back a bit.
I, as the chair, I don't agree with that judgment. So again, is there, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move. I will move ordinance ninety-six O twenty-four, amending Title Nine, Chapter Four, Section Three regarding rabies vaccination requirements.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of ordinance ninety-six dash O dash twenty-four. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Reed, is it, is your last too long?
Burns then Reed.
Councilmember Burns then Reed?
Yeah, of course. So I guess I'd like Councilor Y to weigh in on this. So again, we, my understanding is, is we have a referrals process. Any ordinance, any ordinance needs to go through the referrals process, receive one refer, two co-refers. It goes through a process that referrals committee determines the appropriate venue. It typically starts off a committee, it's discussed, it moves up to council, we vote on it. That's, that's how we've handled everything. Now, it, it, there, there are times where within a, a discussion about one of those items, we've, we've made other changes that, that weren't necessarily in the original referral, but they always stayed within the same item. It was never, it was, it's, it's never been its own item, especially in a situation like this where it's not really the same thing. One, I think it's talking about rabies, how to deal with vaccination, rabies vaccination requirements. And the other one has to do with, with, you know, how we, with dog breeds and landlords. So I, I just want to make sure we're clear because this would be an easy loophole where if I want to, you know, if I want to move something outside of the referrals process, I'll just wait until we discuss something. And even if it maybe is somewhat related but not directly related, I can add it on as its own ordinance to be voted on separately. I just, you know, I don't think it's allowed based on our current rules. And so I'd love you to, to weigh in on that. And then again, I'm, if I'm right, I'm happy to make a, another motion substitute or whatever I need to do to just suspend our rules on this one. It's not a, not a big deal. I just want to make sure we're doing this right.
Thank you, councilmember Burns. So when I look at Rule nine point seven of the city council rules, it says the committee shall refer, so refer any item. I'm sorry, no proposed public policy change shall appear on another standing committee's agenda unless and until it has been approved for consideration via a roll call vote by the referrals committee. And when I review that rule, it doesn't specify that if a topic comes up that's come before the city council and then is split off, it, it, it doesn't have any specific boundaries around that. So I would say that the, the rule is a little bit vague in this instance. So I would say that the rule is a little bit vague in this instance. My suggestion would be that, you know, we clarify the rule going forward, but there's nothing in the rule that prohibits it at this time.
Point of order.
Councilmember Burns still has the floor. Do you, are you?
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to understand is that, again, this is its own policy change, and so it just doesn't feel like it's silent. It says that it's supposed to go through that process, so I'm just, I'm unclear on why you think it's silent on how we deal with a separate, unrelated policy change from what was originally referred.
Absolutely, because I think the ordinance that was before you for HS1 included this, and so it's, well, it did tonight until it was amended, and now it's further amended in HS3. So it has appeared, it's.
Well, I guess actually that made some sense, the fact that we did that first. I think what was confusing, it was on the agenda, which it probably had to be in order for us, well, I don't know if it had to be, because it could have been on the agenda as part of HS1, then we could have split it up during the meeting and then voted on it that way, which is probably what I would have preferred as opposed to them both appearing on the agenda as if we had already done that. So maybe that's the thing that if we can, if we can clean that up next time. You agree with that?
I mean, I'll, I'll say, I, my read of the rule is the same as the Corporation Council. I don't think there's anything inappropriate about this. I'll just repeat what I said. I think in general, I mean, we sat for hours in the Rules Committee early in this term. I think we made a lot of progress. I don't believe that we have a perfect system at all, and I think this is an example of something kind of a little, little loose that should be improved. So I'm totally, I'm totally on the program of, let's continue to tighten this whole thing so that the process by which something moves over the course of months from one of our brains into the city code is completely predictable. I would say we have, I think it's much more predictable than it was four years ago and much less predictable than I would like it to be still.
Yeah, just last, I guess I'll vote on this. I just want to clarify to the group, I think the one mistake we made is just shouldn't have, it shouldn't have appeared as its own item until we split it up, because then that would have, we would have been giving, you know, council authorization to do that and to assume that we were going to do that, I don't think was the right thing, right move. But I'm happy to support this. Hopefully we can, we move forward differently in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed followed by Harris.
Thank you. I just want to say that, when, where did, when did this, one, I support this, like I'm not against this, I think it makes sense, but I do think, again, to protect our rules, to protect the, what we're trying to accomplish with the referrals committee, we can't let things like this slide without the council taking official action. And so how did this get added into the ordinance? I don't believe it was added in at Human Services. It was added in at, it was at council.
The language itself or the?
The, yeah, the language that's in HS3.
The language itself came from, I can't remember if it's the animal.
It came from the Police Department.
Or the Police Department. It's just, the, I think last, two weeks ago, we talked about that this would be on as a separate item, I think.
I don't recall that. But, but my point being is that folks wanted to split it up, but we never officially voted on that. But my point is that the language in HS3 wasn't voted on by the referrals committee, wasn't voted on by Human Services, and was added in as a suggestion by the Police Department when this was introduced at our last meeting, but there was no council action that said, I just, I think the most appropriate to skip all of this, I think we should vote to suspend our rules. I think our rules are clear that you can't just have an ordinance break off that never went through committee, that didn't go through referrals, is not even remotely close to what their original referral is about, and just because it's in the same rough section of code that you can just, you know, out of thin air, create a new ordinance that doesn't go through the process. And so I would just move that we suspend the rules to adopt item HS3.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of the rules to allow item HS3 to be heard, notwithstanding the fact that the chair believes that is allowable without suspension of the rules. Councilmember Kelly, seconds.
Then I will remove my motion, and we'll have fun with this in the future.
Councilmember Harris?
I just wanted to go on record to say I do remember us talking about we need refers and all of that, so I do want to make sure we're sticking to policy and procedure that we decided upon, big or small, that we follow the rules that we set. So if that was not part of the process, it was a bit presumptuous to put it on there saying we split it up. So I do want to go on record saying I have objection with that. Thank you.
Good day, members of the City Council. I go with Director Health and Human Services Department. I'm not certain if this will make any difference, but during one of our Human Services Committee meetings, we discussed restrictions when it pertains to breeds and also discussed briefly vaccinations. And if you can take a look at the memo at City Council regarding this matter for October 28th, it clearly states, and I read, "In conjunction with this proposal that means the breed restrictions, the Human Services Committee agreed to incorporate pet licensing, including vaccinations, into the ordinance." So like I said, I don't know if this makes any difference as it pertains to the rules, but this was mentioned at one of our Human Services Committee meetings.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddad-Carres?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffredin?
Councilmember Saffredin? With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 96-0-24 is introduced. This brings us to call of the boards. Councilmember Revell?
Just to mention that I'm having a seventh ward meeting next Tuesday, December 3rd, here in the Civic Center, and we're going to be talking about a variety of issues, including finally residential parking restrictions for U2 events.
Councilmember Reed?
No eighth ward meeting on this last Thursday of the month, as it is Thanksgiving, and we will return in early to mid-December with our monthly ward meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Haddad-Carres?
December 10th, ninth ward meeting at the South End Community Center. We will have city staff there to talk about Envision Evanston and what that means for the ward, and also staff to discuss the, the, why am I drawing a blank on this? The, the healthy buildings ordinance. That's it.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Harris?
No report.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, I'll be having office hours on Thursday, December 5th, Brothers K, 7:30 to 9:30.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you. In collaboration with Councilmember Kelly and Councilmember Harris, we are hosting a downtown, a meeting for downtown residents to talk about Envision Evanston.
And businesses.
And businesses. This is going to be Tuesday, December 3rd at 6:00 PM. This will take place in lieu of my regular fourth ward meeting, but we're doing a joint community meeting for Envision Evanston. And, and looking ahead at December, office hours are going to be Saturday, December